Today is the French. We've got Sean Wilkinson, Cortland Erickson, William George Ross. Scott Park needed to be excused. We've got some gentlemen here with Utah Broadband. Mr. Wilkinson, as much as you're listed first, I'm going to have you proceed.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have entered into a contract with Utah Broadband for them to lease property at our tower site in the Ogden Valley. So they are going to be broadcasting a signal for wifi from there or for internet service. But they have approached us as well about installing broadband in the Ogden Valley within the county's rights and ways. And in that case, we would need a franchise agreement for them to be able to do that. So we entered into a franchise agreement with All West Communications last year in December, and we did not charge a fee for that franchise agreement. And that's part of the discussion that we want to have today. What we want to do moving forward with franchise agreements and fees, and Cortland can speak to the legal aspect of that. And then how we want to handle specifically this franchise agreement with Utah Broadband so that they could get moving on their project.
Good to know.
Sure. So in the past, the franchise agreements that the county has entered into have been not always really consistent in terms of fees being charged. And so we started looking at that. There was no provision in the All West contract, as Sean mentioned, for any kind of a fee. It's actually similar for Rocky Mountain Powers franchise agreement. I realized that those are two totally different animals in terms of the service they provide, but
Same types of contracts.
Same type of contract. And actually, franchise agreements have been done different ways. Sometimes they're done through an ordinance that is presented with the county commission, but it's really in the form of a contract. And so it's kind of been frankly, a scattershot approach, it seems, in the past. And I haven't really done any heavy looking into it until fairly recently. And I can't say my looking into it's been completely exhaustive, but I have found a few things. For instance, it seems like ordinances used to be more of the way that they were done. And they're still sometimes done that way. But the courts have said that if an ordinance is enacted that has the form of an agreement where the other party agrees to the terms of it as a almost a condition for, well, not a condition, but part of passing it, it really is contractual in nature. It doesn't just give the county the right to go in and enact an amended ordinance. So it is questionable whether there's any real benefit to doing it through an ordinance rather than just doing it through a standard agreement, a contract.
Years ago, when I was mayor, actually, I was city councilman back then, Plains City entered into a franchise agreement, and they've maintained that franchise agreement to this day. And it was just a contractual agreement.
Sure.
Do they do it by ordinance?
Uh, with contractors on it.
Yeah, you're saying Cortland doesn't make any difference.
It doesn't seem to have a big legal impact. And so a contract might be simpler. It's certainly easier to amend.
If you do a contract, I'd say, why do the ordinance?
That's what I feel.
If it has the same validity, no reason to tie our hands any longer than stronger than
Yeah, that makes sense to me. And they can be done for a term of up to 50 years by statute, at least some types of franchise agreements.
Okay.
And in terms of fees, we need to look at the specific type of entity that we're dealing with, because with some types of entities, there are federal laws. With some types of entities, there are state laws that regulate how much of a fee we can charge. There is case law saying that a fee in a franchise agreement cannot be used for revenue purposes. It can't be in the nature of a tax just to raise general revenue. It needs to be related to the actual cost of regulation. And so that is something we need to consider in whether or not we enact a fee. So like we've mentioned, some of these franchise agreements don't even have any fees associated with them. There may be though, some costs that are associated with administering them, that a fee would would benefit. And Sean would be in a better position to speak to that than I would. But he had asked me the question, would we be restricted in what we would be able to use those fees for? And essentially, it appears from the cases and from the statutes that it would need to be related to the actual cost of allowing those entities to operate within our public right of way.
And part of this was brought up because we talked about that a little bit, but the thought was they have to apply for excavation permits anyway, and they are paying for those excavation permits. And does it make sense to put a franchise fee on top of what they're already paying for the excavation permits? Because that's where our review process comes in. And that's, and under that ordinance, that's where any, any action we would take would happen.
We don't want to gouge these guys, but we don't want to subsidize them either.
Correct.
So this, this comes back to what it is we're charging here. So when we were out there, we charged a franchise fee, and that's when they came through and run cable television. And we charged a fee based on that. Then later on, we started a fire department, and we elected to charge a franchise tax. And that tax went specifically to fund the fire department. So a tax you can use to fund, a fee you can't.
If it's a properly enacted tax that's allowed by statute.
Right, right. What we're talking about is a fee here with the
So is this what we're talking about, these gentlemen right here?
That's what
Access to the right, what we're talking about, access to the right of it. Okay. And so what's our, my question, so what is our cost if they're, are you in an excavation?
Yes.
So they, you'd pay for an excavation?
Correct. They pay for an excavation permit. And it's, it's based on how much they're excavating.
Yeah.
It's a reasonable cost.
And we have it in the past, well, I guess, recent past, All West.
Correct.
We didn't charge them a franchise.
We did not charge All West. We did not charge Rocky Mountain Power.
So I, I struggle with why we would change that now, right?
So that, that's the policy question before you today. Do you want to charge a fee for these franchise agreements? Or with the excavation permit, is that enough?
Well, according to Cortland, we have to justify our cost for that fee.
Correct. We're limited in
And I don't know what the cost would be.
Yeah, right. I mean, there, there, there are some, like I mentioned, statutes. The one that applies to small wireless facility provider or small wireless providers who build these small wireless facilities or locate them in the public right of way. That is a state law that says the fee may be up to 3.5% of all gross revenue related to the wireless provider's use of that right of way for the small wireless facilities or $250 annually. And so there are statutory caps on some of these. But again, if we bring that revenue in, we need to be able to justify it.
Right.
And so another option for you right now would be potentially a subject to negotiation if the company were willing to agree to this term. We could move forward with no fee currently, but if the county decides in the future that we need to enact maybe an overall governing ordinance for franchise agreements that speaks of fees, we could put a clause in or, you know, if they'd agree to it that says, if in the future the law changes and the county begins to enact fees that cover franchise agreements, then they would be subject to those fees that would be adopted later. We could try to leave that option open. That way it's a non discriminatory thing. It applies to all providers equally. So that, that's something that Sean and I discussed, negotiating if, if commissioners would prefer that approach.
Yeah, I like that. Leaves it open for the future. Are you guys going wireless?
We'll have some wireless placements. For the most part, we'll be doing fiber optic distribution.
You will.
And you've started in Huntsville Town, is that correct? We, we started near Huntsville Town.
Okay, you have?
Yeah.
You're not doing, I thought All West and Liberty Broadband is doing Huntsville.
All West, I know, has gotten some funding to be able to do Huntsville proper, but we'll be on the outskirts in the unincorporated portion of Huntsville Town.
Oh, well, I better not vote on that. I might have to sign up with these guys.
So it sounds like there's no need to impose a fee right now in this
That's where I'm at.
This agreement. We can go ahead and negotiate that. But do you want to try to keep it open in case the law changes, we negotiate something in there?
I like to charge fees, but I like to keep them very small and uniform. So, you know, small and broad. I don't want anybody being hit hard. So even if you do, I want small fees and very broad.
So that, that is something we can look at then as we move forward.
Right.
Yeah. Let's say if we come up with a policy a year from now, we have that in the contract
Yeah.
that you guys would have to agree to. If the event we do that, then it is what it is.
Small and broad.
So we're not locked into it.
And applies equally to everyone.
That's right.
Yes.
Small.
But with that, Cortland, would that allow us to go back to All West or?
So we talked about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, we did talk about that. And we'd have to look at that contract and see if they accepted it formally. Actually, that was an ordinance.
It was, okay.
Did they accept it formally?
I mean, I would just like to be consistent from here forward.
Right. And we would have to look at that. And that's a question that Steve from Utah Broadband.
So they did not sign because it was an ordinance.
Okay.
Only the county
So it might be that they never formally accepted it. And so we might be able to go back and say, we're starting over. We'd have to look at that. So
Yeah, we do. It's got to be fair.
I would like to do that, to make sure that we're gonna, in the future, hit these guys, let's hit the other guys too.
Yeah.
Small and broad.
Yep.
And I'm good with that.
Now, Rocky Mountain Power, we've got that contract, that franchise.
I don't think we're gonna change that one.
Negotiation.
Yeah, that, that expires in 2022. So they'll be back.
Right. It's actually in negotiate, well, in review right now.
For next year.
Yes.
So do we want to try to include a similar provision in that one saying?
I would. Yeah, let's be consistent.
Yeah. No reason not to.
Is she with that?
Well, it makes things easier for the same. That's what all businesses want. It's easy for me to remember that way. I want to be the same.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Erickson?
We, we've got a template agreement. You've made some changes to that template agreement. So Cortland, do you mind just putting that provision in there? And if you're comfortable with
Yeah.
with it, and we can move forward.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. So you should see the Utah Broadband one fairly quickly. I know they're eager to get it signed.
Yes, we are.
I want to make sure this is reviewed by especially Chris Crawford. I don't want any fees. I want to get out ahead of him. It's really important to us today, especially.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks, gentlemen. Good luck out there. We need broadband.
Yeah, we'll do what we can. Thank you.
Man, Gage, this fiber finally got to the point where it's going everywhere right now.
Yeah.
I mean, Far West has got it going, Plains City's got it going, the tune it up in the upper valley. I mean, it's going again.
Oh, yeah. Well, you saw the, the infrastructure bill went through, and there's billions of dollars in there for broadband expansion.
Yeah, as there is. But hopefully those guys, that 10 million they applied for up there, hopefully they'll get some of that.
Yeah, I would hope. 10 million, what was it, 30 billion just for that? I mean, it was amazing. Yeah, 10 million, especially for the Ogden Upper Valley. That's the nice thing, more, just more, more infrastructure going into the upper valley.
Didn't they feel like they'd have an answer on that by Thanksgiving, if they were going to get it?
Yeah. And I know that John Vaughn, I think you've been talking, Scott Parker, been talking with the state. So we'll find out.
We'll see what happens. That's great news. Okay, commissioners. Well, let's move on.
This is a discussion on building permit fees. We owe our very own Stan Furnish.
So are we on time right now?
Oh, we're damn close. Well, we're a little over, but we're okay.
He'll be up here anytime.
The albat stands out in the hall.
12:30. So. Stan, come on in.
I saw your old friend Lionel Richie over the weekend.
You did? How was Lionel? Lionel was amazing.
Sweet. Oh, yeah, gentlemen.
Sweet.
Only would have done better up on stage would have been you. Now, he, he's pretty good for 72-year-old.
72 years old.
72.
Did you go to school in the end too?
No.
He'd be a year older than you.
He didn't do any songs off that were more country off that Tuskgee album type. Gosh, that was, that was one of my favorites. He partnered with a lot of country people on that. Kenny Rogers was a good buddy. Kenny Rogers, what? Was there at the
Really?
Yeah.
Kenny died a year ago, though, didn't he?
Yeah, a year or two ago.
I guess they were good buddies.
I didn't know that. Stan?
How we doing?
Here, give me another copy of that. We'll pass this down to Gage. Boy, I'll say, right there. All right, Stan, you're up. Go ahead. We're ready to go. Try to keep up.
Basically, we changed our ordinance about a year and a half ago.
I remember you brought in some of these.
Yeah, we brought things up to
Right.
more current standards. What has occurred in recent past is we were getting some feedback on over the counter type permits. So a mechanical contractor in this particular instance feels that we're valued too high. And he found that it's, our ordinance reads and says that basically electrical is $150 for over the counter type permit, plumbing mechanic for $100. We said a base value is $47.
Aren't those normally the same, plumbing or electrical?
Oh, we, we value it electrical a little bit higher because it seems like there's more involved, more often than not, we're not going to get one inspection. So we, we decided that this we're going to, was where we're going to go. What we're running into now is some of these projects get, if it's, if it just say we're changing out an HVAC system, changing out a furnace, whatever it might be, relatively short and dry, usually maybe we're in and out of there with one inspection, two at the most. So we're at $100, we're more or less almost covering cost, perhaps. We know what it costs for personnel today, whether it be contract services or ourselves. We're, I don't think we, you know, we're there, but this was an attempt to be there. But we're actually being cited as being a more expensive jurisdiction than most. So I reached out to a few jurisdictions and actually got some of their numbers, is how, how they value them. And we are showing in the higher of them, like Shepherd Farmington, their base fee for these is $55. Ogden is at $8,296, and the municipal service district is at $70. What we've been doing as well is depending on the valuation of the project, you know, there's, there's this threshold to cut off. When you look at the uniform building code schedule here, if you look at where $97.25 is a valuation of up to $4,000, at 100, we're right in there of like probably $40, $200 or something like that. Most of these systems that they're putting in are 6, 8, 10, $15,000 and above. So on some of the upper ones, we started charging it by valuation, but I don't think we can do it.
All right, well, hold on. I'm going to push back a little bit, and you can teach me or tell me why. You know, if you go into a home that's built, that's, oh, maybe got to, it's a 2,200 square foot home, 1,100 up, 1,100 down, you know, you're only going to have so many switches and so many toilets and so many electrical boxes and so many returns and exhaust or HVAC. But you go into a home that's 11,000 square foot up and 11,000 down, that changes everything a lot. I mean, you're going to have fire sprinklers, you're going to have a whole bunch of other things to be added to that. So to go in, I think having a flat price, I think an escalating price is smart as it relates to the value of the home. Now, they do build some, they, there's a lot of things different between a 4,000 square, I'm taking them else. You know, I think Flying J, I remember when Flying J built their house out in Eastlake, and it was 4,000 square foot, and it was 10 times the money that any other house was with the 4,000 square foot that I've been in because of their fit finish. So there's a lot of things that are different about homes. And I respect that inspectors have to go look at all those different things and how they all line up. So tell me where I'm wrong there. So why, why doesn't this work?
You, I don't think you're wrong at all. It's because of the pushback that we're getting, we're just looking and saying, okay, if we are, is our jurisdiction that different from others?
I, I, I will say that. I will say it. There is. And let me tell you why. Our jurisdiction's a lot different because if you go to any city, Farmington City, it's this big. If you go to Centerville City, it's this big. If you go to Ogden City or North Ogden City, or it doesn't matter what city, it's this big. When you go to Weaver County, it's this big. Our travel time, we got to pay our guys to go clear up there and clear back, you know, and they don't have that travel time. And it, there's, there's cost of equipment, there's cost of our, our personnel. I mean, yeah, you might be able to go up and get one or two while you're up there, or three or four in the same trip. But the fact of the matter is, is there's a destination charge. You just talked about this. I've been doing it for a long time, but the plumbers have started doing it now where they put a destination fee on there. This is the way, but this is unfortunately, I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, or they're getting to the point where they're saying, look, a water heater is no longer the cost of the water heater so much. A water heater is now this fee.
Great. That's what it costs.
So this is good. Let me, let me throw one other thing out there. What we're, we're not talking about the size of the house. We're not talking about returns and switches and all of that. What we're talking about, if they took this system and they put it in a 2,000 square foot house or a 10,000 square foot house, it's the same system with the same installation.
I disagree.
But it is. And that's all we're inspecting. All we're inspecting is the installation.
All you're expecting is the furnace?
Yes, that's all we're inspecting.
You don't, you don't inspect any of the runs that they did?
They've already
Now, some of this
Part of the term, have those guys get in there, and then they do a deck cleaning too.
Yeah, so
And the upsell, right. But now, what, what we're saying is, okay, now, we've got a homeowner that wants to do a low efficiency appliance, 85% or whatever it's going to be.
Yeah.
And that unit is $8,000. You've got customer B who's putting in the exact same type of equipment, but goes high efficiency. So his $8,000 system just went to $14,000. And we're charging him by valuation because of the upgrade. No additional work is done. It takes no more inspections to do that. That's where the, the argument is coming in. Now, the way our ordinance is written and set at that base value, it really doesn't speak to valuation. We've been doing it that way because I feel that's the right thing to do as these projects
You've been doing a flat fee.
No, we've been doing a flat fee up to this threshold amount, which I believe is too low. And that's part of my, what this is all about. So in anything that we do that's over $4,000, like $4,100, you know, $4,100, then we go to evaluation. So this was set as a base fee so that we're not sending inspectors out there on some of these really small projects for less than $100 bill to cover our costs. But as these get
Well, let me tell you what's happening right now. A water heater, when somebody has water heater replaced, they don't call you anymore. They don't call you and get permit.
Doing it.
They're just doing it.
That's right.
Yeah.
And that goes too much.
That's right. So
Yeah.
What's a water heater cost anymore?
Well, water heater, we're around $750, $800 now.
That's out the door, and then you got to get it installed.
Well, yeah. And so the plumbers are charging 18, 16, 17, $1800 now to replace the water heater. Well, so what's happening is that they put them in and then say to the homeowner, it's your responsibility to pay for the
The permit.
Permit and get it inspected. And then they leave. And then the homeowner says, well, dude, it's in, it's working. I'm happy. Heck with buying that permit.
Yeah, they're not, they're not going to pay another hundred bucks.
Reroute's the same way.
What is?
We catch a fraction of the reroutes that go on.
Oh, yeah.
They're just doing it. Reroute permit, just tear off and replace. We're not, I bet we only get a small percentage of those.
So what are you asking for, Stan?
Um, basically some guidance. And what I'm looking for is to say, here's what I, my thought is on this. I think these values are good to, as far as where they're set in many cases. But I think maybe we should change the language a little bit to sort of threshold amount. So say, this $100 on mechanical permit is good up to a valuation of
$20,000.
50,000, whatever it might be, that valuation. And once we cross that, then we go down to valuation.
So let me tell you where I come on this, where my feelings are. If it's repair or replace, it's right off that schedule. It's off that right there, 100 bucks. Why go out and spend a lot of time when you're going to walk out and open the door and look at a furnace or look at a water heater or look at a whatever and say, yep, that's done. It took you all five minutes to look at it. Same thing with the new vacuum, the repair of one, they're going to walk out, look, yep, that's good, and walk out the door. 100 bucks is plenty, or the 150, whatever you think. I think that's all. But when it comes to new construction or major remodel, then the valuation kicks in.
Because all money, right?
Huh?
Off price, more, more.
Right. Off price at that point. Well, and that's because at that point, you're down to stud walls, and you're looking at re-wire, reducting, yeah, new, new plumbing pipes, stuff like that.
Now, there's almost, you've got to be careful. There's a little bit different animal because when we're doing new construction, we're basing that off of square foot valuation now.
Right.
So we take that, but then we add this base
They're already paying that. So this, yeah, I don't disagree with where you're headed with that. So why would we charge somebody for the same amount of time that we said? If it's low efficiency, it's a $4,000 unit, we're going to charge them X. If it's, if they go with high efficiency, they're putting in the same amount of time for our inspector. Why do we, why are we hitting somebody because they're, you know, putting in higher efficiency or more money? It's the same amount of time for us.
Yeah.
We shouldn't get involved with their purchase decision.
I agree with that.
That's where I'm at.
Wait, hold on, hold on, just a second, just an idea. If we're trying to get people to be a little more efficient, well, I would say, hey, maybe we have the lower efficient permits or maybe a little more, and the higher efficient permits are maybe a little less.
Now, you're going to get, I can't afford that. You're penalizing me because I can't afford
Okay.
This better
Listen, that's just an idea. Second thing is
I know where you're headed. I like the incentive, but here's another one.
No, I just, hold on. We should look at the amount of time we put in.
I agree with that. Here's the thing. That's exactly where I'm headed with this. We should look at the amount of time. Somebody calls and gets a permit, it, 100 bucks or whatever the fee is. If we catch it, then there's a fee, maybe it's 500 bucks or 600 bucks.
Penalty, huh?
Penalty.
Penalty is, Sam's in our organs right now, is double the permit fee.
I don't know.
So if we're commences without a permit
Yeah, that's enough.
It is double.
Come on, you know, if it goes from 100 to 500, you're going to have men here wanting to scalp you. What little hair you got.
Well, I won't get a lot of it. But the whole idea, those have people be more frightened. Give them incentive to be upfront and honest and get these guys there.
And again, this doesn't, this doesn't cover commercial. Commercial is always going to be the evaluation.
And the answer, protecting the homeowner as it is, you know?
This is, this is all just residential, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I just charge them for the amount of time. If this is a fair amount of time, I'm good.
I agree.
If it's not, raise it. But I, there's no sense in charging more just because they decided to put in the
Right.
Triple A versus
New construction, it's off the, it's off that.
New construction is that plus these. We have it the way the ordinance has, and it reads, it says
UBC. It's in addition to
It's under the UBC, but it's also in addition to the fee schedule in section 12 dash 3 dash 6, which is the table, these fees stand. So
Okay, so it's that plus this.
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Fine on new construction.
I do.
This is existing construction.
If it's, if it's remodel construction, once again, it's going to be this plus that based on the value.
Yes.
If it's replacement of stuff, it's going to be that.
There you go. You got your
Do you care if there's a threshold? Do you care if it's over $20,000? Do you want us to start doing the valuation on it?
I don't.
Okay.
Although replacement of a furnace, none of that's going to be over 20,000.
If we get out in the field and find that now they've run, they've run a series of gas lines, they've reducted the house, all that, we leave that alone where it is. We win some, we lose some. And just let, you know, these really don't add up to a lot overall annually.
You know, I'll tell you where I'm at there. If they do all that, the purpose of the inspection is to protect the owner, to make sure that all that got done, and they don't fire that sucker up and blow the house up. So that's where I'm at. That's where the division needs
You have to stay, that's the foundational feel, right?
That's right. So I don't think it'll ever be at 20,000. It'll always be blown. If it is at 20,000, then obviously it was a remodel. And that goes under a different fee.
You know, when we did the, when we did the lighting for commercial businesses or houses up there
Yeah.
The, the, the light, blue, whatever it was called up there, the
Oh, dark sky.
Dark sky. It was greater than 25%. If the remodel was greater than 25%, that's, that seems to stay pretty good. That's pretty consistent with
Yeah.
Home Building Association stuff. So that's where I am. That's, I think, a good way to do it. That'd be my vote.
So, and that being said, leave the ordinance the way it is. And and just do it strictly off base value.
So new construction, use the UBC numbers you presented. If it's a remodel, then you[1799.13] If it's a remodel, then you just do the hundred bucks or whatever you got there. And I think we're all in agreement.
Regardless of value.
Regardless of value.
There you go, Stan, we agree.
Regardless of value.
Okay.
You did a good job today, Stan.
All I needed to know.
Have the counter on your way out.
What?
See what I can find back there, gentlemen.
Okay.
Okay.
Christie, we're ready.
Make sure that we're staying in line with where we should be.
Well, no, we're not. This is the Snow Basin Development Agreement. We've got a few minutes still.
You got ten minutes.
Anything, uh, you wanna bring up in this public meeting, uh, this time?
I wanna make sure we have a little time to talk about Randy Ropelato. Well, we're good. About four.
Four o'clock.
Okay.
We moved heaven and earth so we could make four o'clock work for you.
Joe does, I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome.
How long does that gonna take?
Fifteen minutes.
Is that?
All right. Next week.
Next week.
I saw Brad's post, that's why.
What are we doing with John Ritchie?
Well, we're just gonna tell him and then that other guy's coming. So is he coming in here?
He's coming here.
Yeah, they're coming here.
At four?
Four thirty. So John Ritchie is, uh, is Jeff Stevens coming with? No, he can't come, Jeff can't come.
Well, we'll tell John.
That's good pumpkin cake.
That is good, isn't it? Those girls.
Wow. To be sure, I've got a couple of things.
They make nice treats for us.
You don't have anything else you're discussing?
Okay, fine.
I'll be quick.
Make it quick.
My way of information, UDOT is starting to look at a roundabout at one hundred south and highway thirty-nine.
Yeah, it's wonderful, right up there.
Yeah, they told me it was scheduled.
Well, it might, it sounds like it is scheduled.
Well, I can tell you, and Scott and I were on the call with the WFRC the other day where we approved that money. To go up there, so there's just one more thing, gosh, why is it the Upper Valley's getting all the money, Gage?
That's because of that, you know.
Cause they, Gage has done a good job lobbying there.
They, they've given us notice of environmental surveys on property owned by the county that they're going to start doing in that area. State code gives them the right to just go on our properties, do this.
Bring it on.
So, no problem there. Just wanted to let you know about.
That's gonna help a lot with the traffic.
That huge roundabout, and that's a big one too, it's a big one.
He told me that August of next year.
Okay, great.
Is, is, have you heard any different?
I haven't heard anything on the.
No traffic like big roundabout.
I like it.
Well, now we've got the, uh, the, uh, funding set aside for. So, yeah. So in the queue, boy, you know, I'll tell you, that just doesn't magically grow out of nothing.
No.
Lot of lobbying behind the scenes.
Yep. So, out of the sheriff's office, we haven't scheduled the walkthrough yet for you. Because we wanted to wait until we got gas and power in there, that should happen on Wednesday.
We have CBO yet?
No.
Okay.
So we gotta get gas and power, finish up a couple of things, and then our guys will go out, do the final inspection, off we go. With that being said, they're paving today, so the sheriff's office found some extra money. And they're paving, uh, to the west of the warehouse and then around the south. So instead of leaving that dirt, they got extra money, so they paved it, it's out of their budget.
Yeah.
But with that being said, there are a couple of change orders inside that I need to talk to you about. Um, so there was one for eighty-five hundred dollars. This one was to extend our detention pond, which we had to do. Uh, that was thirty-five hundred, and then we added some storage closets in the warehouse space. That came to a total of five thousand, so twenty-five hundred each.
Oh, the decker storage closets, is that what you call it?
Uh, they might be, I don't. Um, in addition to that one.
Uh, do you remember when you said this is the last one, I won't be back?
I did say that, but this is the last one.
This is.
I am not coming back with any.
You just like crow for dinner.
I do. I like, I like crow. We had some issues, uh, placing switches and electronic equipment in that breakout room. So, once they finally got everything framed and built and sealing in, then they had to go back and. Put things where they would fit and where they worked best. So, that, that was another change order that came through, and that one is about eleven thousand five hundred.
For electrical switches?
Not, not switches, they had to run.
The switch that they're used for the internet and all that.
And they, yeah, and all of the locations, I can show you what they put in.
Switch banks, they're, they're electrical, like a.
Man, Sean, that one I really question.
Data stubs, outlets, uh, disconnects.
Why didn't they plan that in advance? Well, I'll tell you, this is finished, that'd be, cannot finish almost.
You're right.
Yeah. So let's the sheriff pay for it out of his budget.
You can tell him that.
Yeah.
Just tell him.
You want me to tell him?
How much is it?
It, that one is eleven thousand five hundred, the other one is eighty-five hundred.
So, totally. Five, I don't have a problem.
We're talking about twenty thousand dollars.
So the eighty-five, I'm with you on that.
I'm okay with the eighty-five.
Yeah.
But the eleven-five, you want me to tell him to take it out of his budget?
Fit and finish.
Okay.
Yeah, fit and finish.
All right.
That's, that's true with anything, that's what that is.
All right.
That's fit and finish.
I will have that conversation with him.
I thought maybe he's coming back for more.
What?
More food.
Oh, I, I, no, I just ate my lunch.
Stacy had that pumpkin cake over there. One for the good Stephanie.
So, I've gained, I've gained six pounds since I started here.
Get on that damn bike, would ya? I know you got one.
I did, I rode it this weekend, I went up, uh, went up, uh, the entrance to Weber Canyon.
Uh-huh.
And did the trail, was really hard, like, really hard.
The entrance to Weber Canyon?
I mean, sorry. I get it mixed up, I'm sorry, Oggi Canyon.
So you, you.
Birdsong.
You did the Highline?
Yeah, I did the, yeah, the one by the bike park, yeah, I about fell off the cliff.
Oh, that's the, that's the one on the north side.
It's hard, yeah, it's on the north side.
On the north side.
I did the rainbow one last week.
Birdsong.
Bird, yeah, I did Birdsong.
Birdsong's the south side.
Yeah, and then the north one.
And north side, you turn off right there by the restroom.
Yep, that's where I went.
That's a little steep getting out of there.
Uh, and it's very rocky and it's this wide and I'm blind in one eye, so. I got a little sketched out on that.
So don't shut the other eye.
You know, this isn't that flat land of.
No, it, no, it's not, and, and I can climb, I'm a climber, but, um. It's the, it's the loose gravel, I'm used to just riding mud, mud and roots, which is a whole nother.
Yeah.
That's a different kind of greasy.
Yeah.
Uh, roots are greasy, Rockies, uh, yeah.
Scary, like I slipped, I slipped, yeah, and it was cliff, there's a cliffside, so I was like, oh, I'm gonna go off the cliff.
Is there any kind of a, a communication within yourself that happens? Is there any kind of? Where did you say yourself?
I say, hop off the bike and walk this part.
That's the best shit.
Very, yeah.
But then I went up to and went hiking up at, um, uh, Green Pond, the Green Pond Trail, I did that yesterday with my family. And I'm, I'm gonna take my bike up there, cause that's a, that's a, would be a fantastic place to ride, it's all packed in and.
Better do it by four, better do it before tomorrow, it's gonna snow up there tomorrow.
That's in pretty good shape, Green Pond Trail.
Oh, yeah, it's a cute, we saw a beaver and there was a beaver day, I'm up there and.
It's good.
Yeah, it was fun, we had fun with the kids, so, yeah.
So we waiting for the time?
Well, I guess so, cause the next item is the discussion on the Snow Basin Development Agreement.
Are they coming, Snow Basin?
No, I think this is just us.
Steve Burton?
Yep.
So Steve's out there, Sean, we can send him in here. That's, if you wanna get something there, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm good, I was, I was.
A pumpkin bread, the gauge is they.
I know.
That's worth, that's worth a little effort.
That's worth a couple of pounds.
I don't know, I'm going to Mexico in a couple of weeks, I need to have a bathing suit on, so.
Mexico, really?
I like Snow Basin this year.
Oh, well, bring him in.
Yeah, I had a scuba diving trip planned before I got hired here, so.
Wow.
I'm gonna go.
So you certified scuba diver?
Yeah, I've been diving since I was fourteen.
Really? That's cool.
Yeah. Yeah, I try to do at least one dive a year, but COVID.
Your certification up.
What was that?
Keep your certifications up.
Yep, exactly. And a good reason to go.
Come on in. Hey, how you doing? You're welcome to sit at the table right here.
Thank you. How are you all doing?
Good, good.
Seems strange to see anyone in person these days.
Yeah. We're over that, we meet in person all the time, man.
Nice.
What's that, Gage?
John Lewis's development up there, one of the neighbors. Talked to.
Well, there's a construction site, right?
A future subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah. What kind of complaint to get?
He didn't like the D nine outside his window.
Well, like I said, it's a construction site.
Exactly.
So they're gonna be plowing in roads, moving dirt, and that's what happens when you have those.
Yeah. I think the D nine. D nine's smaller than D ten.
That's true. Some people say D nines aren't even close to big enough.
No.
I suspect that's be what the Snow Basin would be saying. When they, when they grade that new, uh, hotel up there, it'll probably take a D ten for that.
D ten, maybe D eleven.
Yeah.
If they could even get a D eleven in there.
So, you know, you ever, Lewis, you ever see that, uh, uh, gold deal? Where they're up in Alaska, mining gold?
I haven't. What was it?
I was up at Snow Basin.
Uh, gold, what's that called? Like channel one eighty-two, Discovery Channel? It's called, anyway, they go up there, anyway. That guy bought a D eleven cat, D eleven cat, huh? It was monstrous, and it showed him, get it into the site. So anyway, you know, there's no tracks on it, right?
You know.
And there's no.
When they, when they ship them.
Right, no blade, no ripper, nothing.
They tear them down as far as.
That's right.
And they're still so, so, and.
Well, that's the point, so they're on that truck and they got a low belly truck on it. Well, uh, they can only haul it on certain roads because it's gotta go underneath the overpasses, right? And they show how big it is and those tabs in there. Uh, everything's electronic and digital now, so where you had levers and all this stuff, now, now you sit there with a joystick, it's like this.
I believe that.
Yeah, so anyway, uh, they showed them, put it back together. So when they go, on the truck, they have to lift it up on the edge and put the tracks back on. Then let it down and then it can dry right on the truck. And then the, uh, the blade on it, the blade's monstrous, it's like as big as that whole wall right there.
Yeah.
And then they have to put it on, and then they, uh, that ripper, ripper doesn't weigh as much as the blade, but it's still a little thing because. And then they, uh, they show that thing, you know, they're in that permafrost.
Oh, yeah.
And they have to upend that, well, uh, a D ten hit that permafrost, just stop, those wheels that turn.
I was just.
Really? It goes through that permafrost like it isn't even there.
Really?
Yeah, and you know, it's, uh, five feet down. Well, yeah, but the, uh, the blade is five feet deep. That's how far the ground that sucker goes.
For the ripper?
Uh, for the ripper, that's still a little ripper.
Yeah.
It's monstrous. And it shows it tearing out all up, and it's just, you look at that, that is one impressive thing to watch that.
Friend of mine, a little Filipino guy, he, there were two of them on in Oahu. He was the, one of the operators of one of the two of them. He says, how you like that, he says, all those new ones are nice. I says, he says, what side hill can you do? He says, it'll go up to a seventy degree side.
Oh, I have to tell you.
I know.
I says, does that ever get, I'm, I used to sit in that seat, he said, you sit on the side. I said, does it ever get a little uncomfortable? He says, it's about a second and a half away when you ship from forward to reverse. So you're starting to fall back, I mean, for about a second and a half, you wonder if it's gonna catch on.
Yeah. Then, uh, when you're going like that, I mean, those kind of angles, you need to start moving, you start sliding, dude. So it's like, well, am I ever gonna stop sliding?
You.
Just a little. Yeah, there. Well, I'll, when you drive by the rock pits, uh, in the North Salt Lake there, right on the edge of the hill. Watch those guys drive right up to the edge and push that nerd over. And literally they're just a foot or two, right over the edge.
Yes, yes.
I got those tires and one thing's dirt. And this was a little one, it's only about half the size. About half the size of the wood bed. So Rick, we're gonna meet here at four o'clock and talk about Ranger up there. Are you gonna come in with them?
Yeah. Ren's not coming back.
Go, Ren's not coming back. No, we're just gonna talk about that subdivision, the snakes doing with his property and just the whole thing.
Commissioners, we welcome our, uh, our neighbors from Snow Basin here. This is a discussion on the Snow Basin Development Agreement Amendment. Uh, it will, uh, if, let's start with introductions, but Steve Burton.
Hey.
Yeah, I couldn't see you. I'm gonna have you start there, let's go just right around the room here.
Sean Wilkinson with Community Development.
Stephanie Russell, you can have development.
Jim Hill, uh, Grand America Hotels and Resorts.
Bill Five Ash with East West Partners.
Rick Grober, planning.
Scott Jenkins, commission.
Jim Harvey, commission.
Gage Ford, commission. Okay, great, so, what was your name again?
Bill.
Bill.
Yes, sir.
Five, isn't it?
Yeah, and if you flip page two, my name's right there.
Page two. Right there. Bill. Bill.
Bill.
Fiveish.
Fiveish.
Yes, sir.
Fiveish, is that a Korean name?
Uh, no, it's, uh, indigenous United States.
Really? That's great.
I don't know, it's really hard to tell, but that's, that's the story. There's a good story that'll, that, that deserves telling at some point.
Oh, it'd be great.
There was five of them that got together, and when the sixth guy wandered, they didn't know what to say, so they said, well, just fiveish.
Yeah.
That was good.
That was pretty good.
Yeah, there you go, all right.
All right, the sixth guy was a little short guy.
Handsome, though. Steve Burton, go ahead.
You've been meeting with, um, Snow Basin's development team for probably a year now, Jim?
Yeah.
Uh, about, uh, one of the main things we talked about is amending the current development agreement from two thousand and eleven. Um, that talked about, uh, density and how it's calculated. Um, Snow Basin would like to change a few things in that development. Um, nothing that planning is really concerned about, we're comfortable with the changes. The changes include changing how hotels are counted. So they want to, to count a hotel unit as a third of a regular unit, um, similar.
Or a hotel room is a third of a.
Yeah.
Hotel room. Or put another way, three hotel rooms equals one residential unit.
One single family.
Right.
Why do you want to do that?
Well, first off.
To save money.
Yeah, no, um, it's convoluted in the existing development agreement. We, we've spent sort of hours reading it, trying to figure out how is a hotel calculated? So currently, the way it's written, it's, it's counted as commercial space, and one unit for every five thousand square feet. Well, the way we're proposing it, it's actually gonna take up more density than. The example that's in the, uh, development agreement has a hundred and fifty room hotel, but it's counted there, it's forty-three units. We're actually proposing a way that it would be counted as fifty units. So we're not, it's not about asking for more density, it's just, it's confusing.
So basically, every three hotel equals one single family.
Three rooms, he, he, yeah.
So just try to simplify it.
Yeah.
Why did those lawyer folks from the Snow Basin propose that in the first place?
Well, we'll throw the old guys under the bus. Um, the other thing is, there's a precedent for it with, with Powder Mountain, they had used similar methodology. And when we read their example, we thought, this is a better way to count density, it's just cleaner, it's simpler. So that's the main purpose on that.
Steve, you okay with this?
Yeah.
Sean, what about you?
On the hotels, I don't have an issue.
So why don't we change our ordinance, or though it makes more sense then?
Um, so the ordinance, so we, we can, um, I have to go ahead and look at what it specifically says right now, but this was done. Um, this development agreement was written before our current ordinance.
Would our current ordinance solve this?
Um, it's a good question, I don't know.
I think the D R one ordinance already is one, or is three one.
Yeah.
So would.
Yeah.
But the previous development agree- agreement is what we're amending, so we can't go with current ordinance.
Well, so this isn't built yet, so why can't we go with the current, current ordinance?
That's what being proposed, is to go.
Yeah. But the change, but we're changing the development, they wanna change the.
They had a development agreement back ten, fifteen years ago.
I know.
They wanted to change the current ordinance.
Since they didn't build under that, we're now on a new ordinance, why don't you just let them go ahead and do this?
So the development agreement is separate from the ordinance.
I know.
But it was ten years ago. Don't they expire?
So this, when this development agreement was created, that's when we specified density. So this area is gonna be this many units specifically. And that's why they're coming with us to this change, because they think that the, the number of units.
Yeah, he's gotta give them a few more units.
Uh, this, this actually will give us a few less, that specific thing. The, the bigger deal in here for us is there was also a cap on the number of hotel rooms in Area A, it was capped at a hundred and fifty rooms. Which like, that's not big enough for Club Med, it's not big enough to get a lot of hot beds, so that, that one is, to us like the bigger, like this doesn't work.
That was in the previous development.
Yeah, that, that's in the existing development agreement, that's one of the things we're proposing to amend, that's still.
I guess current, Phil.
Another change that they're proposing is to eliminate, um, units, uh, eliminate counting the number of units for commercial. In area, in area A and B specifically. So under the previous ordinance, sorry, under the previous development agreement, it says, five thousand square feet of commercial area is one commercial unit.
One residential unit. Or, I'm sorry, five thousand square feet of commercial is equal to one residential, or like a single family.
Five thousand.
Commercial.
Five thousand of commercial.
Yeah. Uh, they're proposing to get rid of that cap, they, they don't wanna have the, a cap on commercial square footage, commercial space.
Well, well, I guess what we're saying is, and let me understand this, cause I've, I've gotten a few calls on this. What we're saying is, we are removing the need to use any of their residential units toward commercial capacity.
In, in the ski areas.
In, in A and B.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we do that, Gage? This is all about commercial, in the commercial area.
Yeah. Well, to me, the residential side and the input from the valley is, is about single family, not about commercial, it's about. People coming in, living there, staying there, or whatever, which is a separate argument, but it has, in my opinion, has little to do with commercial. So I, I don't think they're attached to him.
I'll let, I'll let Stephen, Rick speak this, but just the phone call that I received, there was a concern that we are essentially giving more residential units because we're eliminating the need for them to use residential units toward their commercial space. So people feel like we're giving them more residential units to develop. Yeah, that's just.
So basically, off their total TDRs.
Yep.
Before, they had to pull out X number based on every five thousand feet.
Correct, and now they don't.
But what you're saying is, you're giving some of those back, just on what we just talked about with the three.
With, with the hotels, I think we're giving some back, so I think that's a trade-off.
So.
Is that right or wrong?
That's correct.
Sean, let me get this straight.
Yep.
So other people are worried that on their commercial development, up on the mountain in Huntsville. That we're gonna give them too many residential units to develop.
That is correct.
I don't understand this.
Go ahead.
Their number of units has already been said, set in the development agreement, and they're not proposing to increase that.
Wait, he just said to do away with that, number of rooms.
So, sorry, the number of units, Jim, twenty-four, I think under the current agreement, it says twenty-four, twenty-six, right?
Yeah.
Is the total number of units that we.
For the entire deal?
That's residential, yes.
That is.
Well, it's units, and then there are these other formulas of what equals a unit.
No, I understand what's happening here, so they don't wanna use the residential units up for their commercial development, it's that simple, and I wouldn't either.
Yeah. Our reasoning really is this, with in-ski property on the mountain in particular, it's hard enough to get commercial to go. It, it's not really gonna pencil very well, and so if, if as the developer, you have the trade-off, and it's like, okay, I've got this pot of units. They're quite valuable as a residential unit or a lodging unit, but it's maybe even negative value. If I use it for the commercial, it then doesn't incent you to do the commercial, and so we don't, we don't want there to be anything slowing down the commercial, if you will.
And from a county's perspective, we don't want you to either.
No, we like the commercial.
The, the commercial is what, you know, obviously, you, you have to look at that blend. The residential makes the commercial work, but I see no reason to basically, you know, put any liability on your commercial. Because the residential, the units have already been established, and to me, they're not attached, so.
I tend to agree with that, I can see no sense to fight this.
And that's what the planning commission said as well.
Is it?
Yep.
So they agreed with that?
They did.
Holy hot tamale, we're actually gonna agree with the decision they made.
One last.
You know, that makes me happy as heck. Because I look to, uh, agree with.
We don't, we don't like voting against them.
No.
Most of the time.
One, uh, I guess the, kind of the final name change, um, in, in what Jim provided you, about halfway through, you start seeing that, what we call these concept plans.
The last two pages.
For the development areas.
We seen this before, this particular.
You've probably seen either the master plan or something very similar.
Mod three and four.
Pot A.
Pot A.
So, under the current development.
As opposed to Part A.
It talks about, the county has the ability to approve or deny concept plans, and it actually says the developer will submit, as they develop more specific or detailed concept plans, like they're looking at right now. It's not currently clear on, on how they, how much leeway they have in placing roads and buildings. And so their, their proposal is to say, you understand this is just a concept plan. We want to be able to, um, put the roads and the, the specific development types in, in different areas. We don't wanna be held to a very specific location within each area. So this, this final change would allow the planning division and planning commission to approve these concept plans as they come.
So what you're saying, you're gonna give us a concept plan, but you may decide to relocate a road. And you don't wanna be tied to have to come back in before the planning commission or us.
Like maybe flip of building a crosser.
Or flip it.
Yeah.
Put a bill, same number of buildings, just put another opposite side.
Actually, what we were suggesting is that either staff or the planning commission could approve it, but that we wouldn't have to go to this level every time the master plan changes, cause we, we think this is gonna evolve.
Yeah.
Continuously.
So either staff or planning, is that how you understand it, Rick?
Correct. Yeah, it's just.
So.
Yeah.
This is the, uh, the roundabouts existing in there, right, up there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. I was up there the other day, so the existing road actually comes in something like that.
Yeah.
Right there.
Exactly.
So this is all.
That's wooded, apparently.
Uh-huh, so this would go up into here, got it.
Yep.
Well, we've seen this, this is good.
Yeah, I'm all for this.
Yeah, I, well, I don't have any problem having either staff or planning commission, I think that makes sense.
So, are you gonna, uh, put this on our, one of our next agendas?
Yeah, in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
We'll notice it, and there'll be, there'll be a public hearing.
Just a quick question, how do you get from this new chair here over to here, to go up here?
That's off, that's off, and then you can ski down.
That's the summit right there.
So you can ski down this over here.
Or down, or down.
That's the, okay.
As well.
It's the summit.
Okay. Got it, okay, I just wanna make sure, you know? I don't like hiking, guy my size without hikers.
If we mess up the downhill and uphill parts, we're really in trouble.
That's right.
That's our first principle.
Super.
Steve, there was one other, in the density calculation, one thing we didn't talk about was excluding employee housing units.
Okay.
And that, that's also, we're proposing that that not count as density, so that it encourages, you know, that.
Where are employee housing units on this?
So in this.
You on the second to last page?
Our last page, the last page.
Okay, last page.
We've got twenty-nine units in our master plan right there.
Yep. All employee houses, so right there.
Twenty-nine units?
That, yeah, and that's just what's required, so we're just putting in what.
Where are you, right there? Oh, just right there. Boy, that's good.
Those like apartments style, or how's that in a medium?
I don't know, you know, we have, in Sun Valley, we recently did a, a really cool, uh, more kind of dormitory style. Within walking distance of the main village in Sun Valley. Helps us a lot, you know, get employees, and we have J ones, and different, you know, different workers there. That's a, maybe a more dense use, it might end up being apartments, I mean, we just, we haven't gotten that far down the road. The other factor there will be the Club Med, they're planning, I think, a hundred and twenty, like, employee rooms within the hotel.
Oh.
Part of their concept is a very high-service, high-connection kind of approach.
Oh.
They like their people.
Right there.
Right in the building.
Hmm.
So.
So you want those excluded from your units?
Correct.
What it says, Magic Carpe, what's that mean?
That's one of those little, where you stand on the, uh, thing that carries you up the hill, you're on your skis.
It's an escalator without the steps.
Yeah.
With, you can use your speed.
Yeah, I've never seen one of those.
Yeah, that's for beginners and lessons, typically beginner terrain.
Great.
They're fun.
Oh, this is good, cool.
Well, I don't have any issue with your, you know, you gotta have housing for employees, or that's just in a continued.
Yeah, I think we oughta give them a little bonus for that housing.
Tell you, that's gonna, that's gonna become key up there.
The fact that that's, that many more, uh, uh, vehicles won't have to dr- travel that road.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, no.
We'll have it on your agenda, probably.
They call that bonus density.
Bonus density.
As you, as you dig into this, if you have any questions, let us know, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Corlin, you okay with all this?
Yeah.
Okay, we oughta make sure now.
Jim, what's your schedule?
Yeah, we don't go on, get on you guys' bad side.
I haven't talked to you in a month or so, what?
Chris Cocke has got a little jumpy now.
We're, we're still on basically the, the same target dates and schedules, so ground, groundbreaking for Club Med next summer. Uh, closing on the land, we got East West Partners signed up formally.
Oh, good.
And Bill is staffing up with other members of his team, so.
Where are we on the PID agreement?
We, it's in our court at this point.
Yeah, they're, they're drafting.
And we're, we're refining it, and we're, and we got, we got your, um, what, the format for the application? Yeah, and we have our consultants now.
Let's not use the same approach that they did back ten, fifteen years ago, when the attorneys got a hold of this. Other game, where future commissions are having to redo it. Yeah, we don't like it there.
Get right, there's, there'll be some.
And you, so you, obviously had conversations, Stephanie, you, you made that transition, everything seems to be good there.
Yes.
This is very well done.
Yeah, all, all is very, all, all is well, um, I think, very much so in terms of the relationship and.
Good.
Working together, so.
That's a moving target, but we're here to help, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Good to see you, thank you.
Good seeing you too. Yeah, Jim, good seeing you, come again once in a while. Give us upgrades, you wanna know where you're at, what you're doing? We're excited.
What, next thing, get us some snow up there.
Yeah, get some snow.
How much you got up there? Do you know? Uh, not much. Oh, come on.
Man, I hustled right up.
You better get ahold of the news, they keep saying you're gonna open, yeah. They thought you were gonna open.
Maybe David is snowmaking, I, I could, I could stay correct.
No, I told myself, that's more important than the pass.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Good luck to you, thank you.
Yeah. But it's cool, Gage.
Thank you, guys.
See ya.
Christie, if our next presenter here from Eden Village, mixed use, appreciate it. I just need a pass to Powder Mountain now, or if anybody can only.
So do I.
Yeah, we can do them both.
Sorry, I don't get involved in that.
They're your buddies.
I still don't take their field. I won't take it.
Tell them we need to come up there on our skis.
I can pay my own way.
I'm okay.
Tell them we wanna come up there and check out those pump stations on our skis.
Yeah.
We need a pass to do it.
Where's that? Just have to be a season pass.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm on the waiting list.
Are you? To get, well, you just, you can come to Snow Basin, it's great.
Yeah, it's a little more pricey.
It's a little pricey.
A little more pricey.
You know those greedy buggers, I keep telling the story, I remember when they jumped their lift ticket from seven dollars to eleven dollars. Those guys at Snow Basin. He says, I'll never come up here again.
I remember when they were five, yeah, you was riding motorcycles back then.
Yeah.
With one leg and.
Seven, they jumped it to eleven bucks, and then the next year, they went from eleven to thirteen, greedy buggers. Oh, it was nineteen seventy something?
Right after he was born.
They still had Wildcat Lift going, and Wildcat Becker and Powder Puff. I think Porky was just built then. Porky was built, what, seventy-seven?
The new Porky, the old Porky had been there quite a while, the Porky was built in the sixties. You know there was two Porky Lifts?
I didn't know that either.
Yeah, you probably don't remember the Huntington House up there.
I don't.
Yeah, so there was that long A-frame right there at the base of the.
Yeah, I remember that.
I remember the A-frame.
The old Pork, the old Porky Lift.
Oh, that was down below then, the old Porky Lift was down below.
It was, no, it was above.
I wanna know why they call.
It was above where the existing one started.
Porcupine.
Porcupine.
You know, I never skied Snow Basin until ten or twelve years ago.
You didn't?
No, I was always Powder Mountain guy, always a Powder Mountain guy.
All the way through high school.
Yeah. I was a Powder guy.
I was too.
Me too.
Yeah, I, I saw my first live back for Powder Mountain.
Really?
Yeah.
And then that day, that guy, no.
I started working at Snow Basin in high school.
Did you?
So my good friend, Matthews, his dad ran the place. Worked up there summer and winter.
That's back when they only had two or three lifts.
Yeah, and you could park in that parking lot, ski down to your lift, that was the best thing. I, I closed that parking lot, I loved that parking lot.
They, uh, they had them little, uh, seats you'd sit on, it was about that wide, I know my butt would hardly go on the whole thing. And then you'd have to hold on to that pole, cause there was nothing else.
That was the old.
You had that seat in the pole, and it was like, boy.
That was a wildly had single chair.
Yeah, and you're all the way down.
That's before my time. Yeah, that's before my time.
It's before attorneys.
And that, that thing could shake you like that.
Well, so, the first time I rode one of those, we got, uh, what was the old ski resort? When you went up, uh, the canyon out of Salt Lake and was on the south side?
Park West.
Park West, yeah, I'd been used to these uh high speed quads, different things like that, and we went up to Park West once skiing. And man, I come up to there and seen that chair, and I thought, geez.
Is that gonna handle me?
Becky sat on that side and I, before I held her, the pole, just scare you half to death. Like you say, you go across the rollers. You scared half to death, you didn't fall off that thing.
I could shake you.
If you was on that alone, you wanted to straddle that bar. Scare you half to death.
That's a scary deal.
So now what we're looking for?
We're waiting to go by.
We're waiting for some just.
Charlie's coming up, he's got more than that.
He's as bad as Rick.
Almost.
We've had a pretty productive day so far, Mr. Chair, can you keep it going? I wish they'd keep up. Steve Burton, you gonna make a presentation in this next one, is that why you're logged in?
Um yes, okay.
In the Eden Village Mixed Use zoning ordinances.
Yeah, you want me to start?
Well, we, we canyon without Charlie here? Steve knows what he's doing.
Okay, well, let's get going then, Eden Village.
Yeah, Charlie will be torch when he walks.
Well, Corlin's here.
I'll be as free as I can be on this, it, it shouldn't take too long. The twenty sixteen Ogden Valley General Plan talks about uh small area plans, villages within the commercial nodes in the Ogden Valley. Uh three years ago, um Charlie and I started writing an old uh mixed use and village ordinance for the four-way stop in Eden, the Maverick four-way stop, and also the, the general store four-way stop. We call that Old Town Eden. Um we have written an ordinance, the planning commission is forward a positive recommendation to you.
Really?
For the adoption of this ordinance, what it would require is, basically if I had to boil it down, I would say it's, it's better architectural standards. Buildings have to look really nice, you've gotta look like um from the, from the eighteen nineties to the nineteen, to nineteen ten, western style buildings, kinda like the blacksmith shop.
So we don't get any funky modern cause, you know, contemporary stuff in there, right?
With, if this ordinance were to be adopted, that's correct.
Within Old Town.
Within anything that's zoned mixed use, so we don't have cur, we don't currently have anything that's zoned mixed use, this is a new zone that we're creating. And we would then be able to rezone people um as the commission wants.
When you talk about another new zone, I told Charlie that we need to get rid of about half the zones. You got so many now, the normal person don't, can't even understand what you got.
You know, you P, if you bring on a new zone, makes you get rid of two or three. That's crossing.
So this is a new commercial zone, um I, you could picture it as a, as a tool, as a benefit that somebody could do, we have I, I can think of two people that have talked to me recently that want this to be a zone, but you're right, it would be an additional zone.
So where would this zone be?
It would be.
Old Town and New Town.
Quarter mile radius on Old Town, quarter mile radius on New Town.
Also, it's the same for both?
Yeah, the same zone.
Or there, or buildings in there, they're gonna have to be grandfathered that don't look like that?
Yes, probably, so.
On New Town, uh so much Old Town. So if they stole all those buildings, will they have to bring them to compliance?
If we rezonate, the, here's the question, if the commission wants to rezonate a bunch of properties that already have non-conforming buildings, then yes, they, they would probably need to bring it in compliance, I don't picture you doing that, I picture us saying, let's rezonate anybody who first wants to, you wanna be rezoned, we'll rezonate you, I picture people who wanna be rezoned that's not having any any buildings on their property yet.
Right.
Vacant.
So they're gonna have to apply for this zone?
They will, unless the commission wants to apply it to other zones, other areas.
What, what's the, how do we? So we're going to rezonate certain areas and they, they will follow these new requirements, but if someone doesn't rezonate, are there other requirements that are going to force them to do essentially the same thing within that quarter mile radius? Otherwise, we'll get a hodgepodge of, I mean, we could have one of those
Right.
new modern buildings and then right next door in the rezoned area, something that looks like the blacksmith shop, right?
Of course, that's the purpose of the zone, right? And so you don't get what you're talking about.
Correct, but it's not applied broadly.
Well, then we're gonna have to apply broadly, or there's no sense in doing it.
The existing CV two zone, the commercial zones in the Ogden Valley, uh there are some requirements to, to have wide sidewalks to do um, to do, to have your building up at the street front, but basically it gives you an option, it says if you're building closer than, gosh, I can't remember if it's, if it's sixty feet to the right of way, you have to bring your building to the street front, uh architecture standards wouldn't apply though. So.
Unless they sold the property.
Unless they sold the property and someone rezoned it to this new mixed use.
I think as we look at this, we would probably want to look at the area all being rezoned and having them as non-conforming, and then as they wanna make changes and they have to comply with the new ordinance, so that way we wouldn't get the hodgepodge of things going on. Uh because if we don't do that, I'm a little more concerned, but we look at that. We look at rezoning those areas, and we have a map, kind of a layout of how we want that area to evolve, Charlie's almost there with it, but not quite. How that map will be laid out, so that's not part of history request at this time, it's just the actual ordinance language that basically gets the tool to accomplish that. But then, well, the next step is we'll be looking at the rezone of those areas, so that we can accommodate that.
I like that you're, you're always trying to update and, and make the ordinance uh fresh. I think that's really important, stays with the time, and we're doing a lot of stuff up there, especially with the, you know, all the stuff that we're doing around the sewer systems and everything else, you know, so.
And this is a requirement from the general plan, that they have asked for this um in these village areas, and so we've been working on this, like Stephen mentioned, fight some time, and so wanting to.
Well, I like the tool, I like having that, I think we have to take a look specifically at certain areas, so what I'm looking at, or what I'm thinking about is, is you take the highway up going up toward Powder Mountain, you hit the four-way stop, you've got the new Golden West there, you've got, you know, some newer commercial buildings, including the, I think uh the bank just went in there, just took over the bank. If, if they were to come in and remodel, I don't see Golden West going to a nineteen ten style. Or that we would require them to do it, or anything in that corridor, I can see, you know, in Old Town where the blacksmith shop is. It makes sense, yeah.
So. No, up in that area, the general plan talks about agrarian um in, in Newtown area, kind of an agrarian look. Um but I mean, we could loosen those standards as much as you want them loose.
I, I'm just concerned about the exist, like the Golden West and some of those that, that are on that highway now, that we don't put undue word on them, if they wanna come in and remodel or update.
Make some changes.
Make changes, you know, and it doesn't, to have a nineteen ten style next to Golden West makes no sense.
And what about the grocery store there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the grocery store already has kind of that agricultural theme. Um as, as does the bank, um what is it, what's that bank next to Golden West, or Old Bank?
Well, it was Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo, it just kinda has that, that roof structure that kinda gives that appearance?
And that's, yeah, to have the agri, you know, component with, you know, some type of roof style, I have no issues with, but to go the full facade, I think maybe, you know, like the Black, Blacksmith Shop in particular is a little strong.
Yeah, yeah, we're not suggesting the old style in Newtown, just, just focused around the park.
Okay, I'm okay with that then.
Like I said, planning commission, we had two weeks ago. We, we, I'm sure we walked into the ordinance, I don't know if you want us to go into that much detail right now to look at where the buildings are going to look. Um I'm happy to do that in, in this.
I, you've got a couple minutes still, I'd like you to take just a couple seconds to show us, if you're okay with that, Mr.? Yeah, good going. And that allows people who have been online, give them a little, especially where you got your computer.
So here's a uh probably the, the first thing that we'd go over and maybe in a public hearing with you is uh we, we'd wanna adopt a specific street cross-section for these areas. Um might be kinda hard to see on the, these screens, uh but we're either thinking, the difference between these two is, is just, is it, is it parallel parking, or is it angle parking? So we're thinking we'd have somewhere between a hundred and three feet or a hundred and seventy feet in the public right of way, sorry, a hundred and seventeen feet in the public right of way. So you see your parallel, you see your angle.
You're thinking a hundred and seventeen?
Yeah.
That is our recommendation. Angle, we prefer, and you can get more spaces.
Yeah.
Have you got that much width up there?
Not yet.
We'll have to require that as development happens in these towns.
We've got a hundred feet in a few places, um but uh we don't have the full hundred and seventeen.
Right.
We're talking twelve-foot driveways, um five-feet bike lanes, planting area.
I hate to be picky here. But isn't that backwards, don't you drive up the road and drive in, and back out, go on?
Yep. We'll have to flip it, imagine upside down.
Take the English approach here and have people start driving on the right as soon as they get up the angle, or back into it.
That's kind of a new method they have is backing in.
Well, they do a lot of them, but uh.
Yeah, right, yeah, that is backwards. We'll fix that.
Okay, I'm sorry, don't be, need to be nerdy on this, but yeah, I wanted to know how you like that.
Well, and somebody would have tried to install it and argued that our ordinance said it, so.
Yeah, right.
So I, I don't know what your, what your thoughts are, if you guys have any issues with angle parking, as we're driving the right way, right, right direction.
Well, and that's a little more of that uh nineteen hundreds? Pretty nineteen hundreds uh look, that's the way they all did it back there.
Angle parking's good, yeah.
You'd require uh trees be planted um every, what, fifteen feet about?
Yeah, so what we wrote was uh the, the tree spacing needs to be whatever the mature canopy width is, so that when the trees reach maturity, you've got canopy after canopy, so you've got a good shaded um walkway for shoppers.
And then fourteen feet of sidewalk, which is quite a bit, but it'll allow you to put like, like dining out there, street furniture.
What, fourteen feet of sidewalk?
So imagine seven.
Guys that own the building, they got four fourteen feet?
That's a lot.
That's have to do.
One of the things that we're probably gonna ask, if the numbers make sense, is uh some kind of TIF financing for this. Um it, it's gonna be really hard to get this kind of a street constructed on a building by building basis, and it's gonna look terrible if we do build in the building. We're gonna have to rip a band-aid off and really put some testing, if you go look at um Colville, Colville did the, they did tax increment financing on their downtown. Um what, ten years ago or so, and you could see uh how attractive that's turned out to be.
I know you're right, I did not was up there just a few weeks ago, I thought, man, they did this nice, this is nice. Cause I think Colville's an old.
So you got off and drove downtown, Colville?
All the way down there. They got a good job with it.
And on Grant Promenade corridor, Ogden City did some of that, but they also got some grant funding. And matching, so they did all that improvement just west of the temple.
Hey, I would think we'd be able to get some uh WFRC money out.
Yeah.
A grant from some type of transportation.
Yeah, you know, on Twenty Fifth Street, uh they have angle parking, that works out just fine, and it is a very uh
User-friendly.
Yeah, well, not just user-friendly, it's an early nineteen hundred-ish.
So that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Just an example of what somebody could do in Old Town now, ignore the, the dirt road.
Yeah, I, I would say exactly.
You've got wood front, uh kind of the false front buildings, uh some detail, windows at the bottom there. Doesn't have to look exactly like that, we understand that brick can be used, no. This building, we realize that it's kind of an allowed. The materials are, are kind of what we expect, you could, you could do a mix, a mixture of the two. We, we wanted to put the blacksmith shop in, in pictures, but we forget.
Twelve-foot main floor, I see it in the height.
So we were thinking, yeah, somewhere between twelve and fifteen, we haven't specifically written that in, but it's a consideration I think we'd have for that first floor. Now, we're not mandating that that first floor be commercial, at least not yet. Um in our ordinance, we, we kinda stay silent on that, but we do talk about how that area needs to be designed and constructed in a manner that, that supports um street-facing commercial. Um and that may allow it to have some flex space until a market exists to have that amount of retail space.
I think you don't have to allow that till the commercials catches up.
Steve, go back, or you go to this one, these components that we put in here are really crucial to creating um good architecture, and it's making sure we have a base body and a cap. If you look at that base area, it's gonna have so much, and then we're gonna have glazing in that area.
This particular building, the first, the whole first floor is the base, and then the upper floor becomes the body and the cap.
And that cap is important that we pick up, that top element gives that detail.
Yeah, that's what they look like.
What type of density?
So you wonder what it'd look like, there's the old style. Nineteen fifty style and.
Yep, yeah, yeah, you can see how they sit right next to each other.
Then you look right here, there's no cap, and look at the difference that that cap makes.
Well, you can, you can peel that facade off and you probably do have a cap.
Yeah, exactly.
So, and, and that. Big start tax credits could be used to renovate that.
It's one of the reasons why around Old Town, we stuck with um eighteen eighty to nineteen ten, is cause that's the era of the city beautiful movement. It's just a lot of investment, a lot of time and effort was put into um making buildings attractive. Shortly after that, you had World War One, which yeah, just everything became function, 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 no aesthetics at that time. We're still, we're still dealing with that.
So this would be Newtown, this is the uh barn-type buildings, I couldn't find any that are on a store, I'm sure there are some, but it's hard, but essentially picture this right up, right up by the sidewalk.
So is that a commercial building, what is it?
Well, so the, the barn.
You don't recognize that?
It would be a commercial building, yeah.
It'd be a fun hotel or, you know, Airbnb.
Yeah, so imagine the um, the Rose Lodge, uh we're, I'm gonna snap a picture of that and put that in here, cause the Rose Lodge, you got the silo, you got the barn. This one right here, I think is, it's a great wedding hall. So we're looking at the um cupola feature on the top, we're looking at the, the vents, the, so maybe some allowance for wrought iron, the Z-bar doors, yep, but we're also requiring that the first floor have a certain percentage of penetration, windows and door openings for that commercial, uh street-oriented commercial aspect, and that's only for the first sixty feet deep into the lot. Behind that, build what you wanna build, basically.
All the first sixty feet.
Yeah, so, so providing that street-oriented facade. Good, good.
I should say, you poppy of it.
Yeah, please do.
You gotta build, you gotta buy one that looks quite a bit like that white one, by the Petersons, if you can get them to catch the vision.
Exactly, so I mean, we're just kinda showing different architectural features, so imagine those uh garage doors being storefronts.
No, no, that's a, a fire department.
Is it?
I don't know, looks like it could be.
It could be, I mean, you think about the fire department that's right across the uh street from the park right now, um I mean, it's metal corrugated, not super attractive, you could put a building right in front of that, as long as you're not blocking their access way out. That can really hold the, the street front.
Yeah, they've got plenty, they got pretty good space between, they got a place that, a guy and a woman, they both can have their cars, you could put a sports car in there, plus there on the left, you can put your motorcycles and your toys there, that's a perfect place.
Yeah, Steve, do you wanna go through the rest of the image?
No. You don't wanna be that close to it, watch.
I've got a couple images to show you.
Little tease.
There's a, there's a, the angle parking in England.
So hang on, uh Steve, go back, go back up. And actually, I think I have a better image of that, um so that, what we're, what we wanna propose and what we are essentially proposing is form-based zoning, in form-based zoning, instead of looking at the, you still look at uses of the land, but you're not dividing areas off saying that doesn't match this, or that doesn't go with this, you're looking at the street. What does the street look like, and what are the uses and functions of the street? And so as we look at each of these streets, I've got a map, I'm trying to find it for you here, um that shows we just color the street instead of coloring the land. But essentially, what we're doing here is we're showing how the area could grow into the future, and I've got a better map than, than what's this, and the one that we have proposed to you is gonna be the one that I have here.
So here's our, here's what we would implement uh along intersections, they're uh they're, they're called uh traffic calming bulbouts, so you can see that uh this would normally be, you got parking up here, kind of this it'd actually bulb out into the dry, not quite into the dry, enough to make people sort of slow down.
This is, this is what this is the anger, what we're trying to get actually all over.
So we'd actually require that on intersections and then did wire, some, some, some type, type of bulbout, you could put plant, planters there.
This gets expensive, you're talking about a fourteen-foot uh cement, and now this on the corner.
It does.
You're adding a fair amount of expense to that.
Yep, that's right.
But you're also creating that sense of place, and that's, that's invaluable.
A sense of place.
It's, it's clanneries, but think of the best, you know, little, little downtown areas you've been. But think of the best places that you've gone to, you know, you've got really short distances to cross the street. You're not scared to cross the street, you're looking across the street to what's shopping, what the shopping opportunities are over there, and what's over here. Um and when you put these bulbouts in, you're automatically slowing people down, not because you're reducing the speed limit, because as they come to a constrained intersection, they're gonna go, ooh, something's different here, and then you're gonna have the stamped um uh crosswalk as well, just kinda they'll pull off the, the gas pedal for just a moment.
What's gonna happen, you're in Old Town Eden, this is gonna slow them down.
Yeah.
As they come through there, they're gonna be slowing down a lot, and then they'll speed up, go around the corner, get to Newtown, slow down again, cause that roundabout.
Yeah, that, that won't hurt a lot of people's feelings, just slow them down a little bit. Well, that, that's more business friendly.
It is, it is very, yeah.
And you could do this on a budget too, just right in our community here in Ogden, right at Kiesel and Twenty.
Yeah, you don't do this, you don't do that whole thing overnight, it's.
Yeah.
They didn't spend a lot of money on that, um but they could have, they could have made it look a lot nicer. They didn't spend a lot of money on that, um, but they could have. They could have made it look a lot nicer like this, but they didn't. They, they kind of scaled it down.
Right.
We just need to make sure as we're building, we get the utilities in the right space. We get the right of the right right-of-way, and then in time, we can implement these things.
Go back to that map you showed with your roads.
This is probably a much better one here. It's a little smaller.
So what do you have in mind? You know, a lot of this is residential through here, right? So how, what do you have in mind for that?
Residential is up in here. You got a little bit in here, but so here's where the fire department is. Most of this is empty right now.
Okay.
And so the red.
That's the riding arena right there, isn't it?
The riding arena for the parks right here.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I know, right in front of the.
The, the red areas, the, or the red lines on the map, that shows the commercial storefrontage.
Okay.
And then the orange areas would show multifamily, um, frontage.
The orange would show multifamily? So this would be multifamily here?
Right, that whole block would be.
Now, with that multifamily, you didn't require the same type of, uh, form base?
Um, so that this is the form base, but when it comes to what those buildings look like, we do, um. Have some regulations on how many window openings there should be and the base body and cap. But not the same kind of regulations we would have just on the, you know, on the commercial street project.
Okay.
So you, at one time, you had a design for these blocks.
Yes, I, I had it.
That will be coming.
Okay. Where you were gonna allow parking on the inside and development on the outside?
That's exactly right. Yep.
Yeah.
So when you look in here, um, so you see orange in here. So alleyways going to your internal blocks. And you get multifamily in here with surface parking, or if it makes financial sense for the developer, they can bury their parking. Uh, put a parking structure in even, um, and build up on top of that.
So do you have a density target for that or?
No, we're talking about letting the height be that regulation.
Which is four-story.
Um, I think we went to, did we go forty-five feet? I think we said forty-five feet on the corners and forty feet in, in between.
That'll be three stories or three stories.
Three stories.
Able to get to that. Let's put a basement in.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so that's, that's what we're thinking and just letting that regulate. And then any new density that, that people are bringing into this area because they. Would be through transferable development, right?
It would be, this wouldn't offer, this zone wouldn't offer any density except for maybe like a, a little work that might be allowed in the western commercial zone. So any density that happens in this zone has to be transferred.
So, uh, and one thing that we did.
Say what you just said. I didn't understand it.
This, uh, village zone would not give anybody any, any residential density.
Any new density.
No new density.
So what would happen is if somebody owned.
Well, that all sounds good, but today, right now, if I come in and want to put a ten bucks right there, we don't have anything in order to prevent that.
Uh, well, so we do right now, um, I mean, if you rezoned it to like, uh, a multifamily, then no, we wouldn't have anything.
Right.
Prevent that.
So this is all speculation.
Well, what we're talking about is a zone that actually says you can do multifamily only if. Yep, only if you're grabbing those rooftops from the, the green spaces out on the, uh, mountainside or on the valley floor or the agricultural spaces. And moving them into here.
If I have to go buy a TDR, but I don't have anybody to buy it from, and nobody knows how to sell me one?
So we, we have a program that we're working on. You guys know that.
They're getting close to that.
Christmas is coming too.
Well, I'm hoping to have a work session with the Ogden Valley, uh, planning commission in December on, uh, on the TDR. So just so you guys know, we have recorded one TDR through ADU, uh, so far, so.
Hold on, one TDR?
Through, um, sorry, accessory dwelling.
Uh-huh.
So somebody moved, uh, uh, dwelling off of another piece of property or dwelling right off another piece of property. And they recorded it to their property and got a backyard dwelling.
Now, so, did, did we care that in terms of where that TDR could be transferred some? We had, we had that conversation where somebody's taken it off, uh, undeveloped, even though they had a TDR.
We're almost there.
Okay.
Yeah, and because of all the things that we have going on, I've done some major restructuring inside our division. So that Steve, Scott can help Charlie on these things so that they can get going on in faster.
It's nice, cause we're gonna have a nice big waterfall of planning stuff at, uh, at county commission meetings here pretty soon.
Okay, well, that's the safe. You know, that's the safest bet is to require the TDR right now. Yeah, even though.
So you know, the other day I was driving around with Ron Gibson. He was showing me a few things and he brought up the fact that maybe we need to do TDRs out west. And the reason is to keep the farming farmable. If they wanna, you know, if they wanna stay into a farm, they can sell the TDRs off of it. And, uh, it keeps it, uh, in a situation where it'll always be a farm.
No, I agree with it. I could, we could do a TDR out there right now.
Right now. So your general, and your general plan right now, the one adopted in two thousand and three, said do TDRs. It said do clusters and do TDRs.
Well, when we get done with this, uh, this new, uh, uh, plan.
Like it's a copy and paste and apply it to.
Well, yeah, uh, I suspect that ought to be a big part of our discussion.
Yeah.
Because, uh, I says to Ron, I said, so would you sell some right now today if you could? He talked for a second. He says, yeah, I probably would. I says, why would you do that? He says, get the bank off my back. And he says, you know, farmers live with the banks all the time, and he says, this is really helpful. And he said, if I could sell fifty or a hundred of those off of a, a section. A gram.
Absolutely. And it keeps that open.
Right, that's what he said, Gabe.
There's actually some sophisticated, uh, economics that goes into it. I mean, you're looking at a five-year horizon on your product that you can pull off of the land. And if it makes more sense to sell a dwelling unit with a potential future real estate value, uh, in order to get your five-year horizon. It's, it's a no-brainer. And so Ron's probably in a position where he's thinking he's gonna be farming for the next fifteen or twenty years. And so it's a no-brainer for him to be selling little pieces here and there to supplement his farm income.
So that's the discussion we really need to have as we look at this general plan out there. To desert, just like we did in the valley, let's put in sending and receiving zone.
So then what happens when the farm goes under? Nobody wants to farm it anymore?
Well, that's, that's.
Because they can't build on it now.
That's the negative part. Well, he's already, somebody's already got their value out, so he's not gonna sell it.
That's the point.
He's not gonna sell it for eighty thousand acre because he's already been paid fifty of that.
Sounds like a great park space.
That's just what I was thinking. That was the thought in my brain.
Yeah.
Is that we oughta attach something to it that says, uh, what it can become if it's ever abandoned.
So my suggestion would be that we, we hit on parks really hard, whether we do that through clusters, through TDR. Um, did, did Ron mention anything about cluster subdivisions to you?
No.
I've been trying to encourage people to.
But I hate clusters.
I know, I know you do.
I hate them.
Trying to encourage people to bring up the possibility of clusters, just to allow for some of this open space.
Well, he's working with a developer out there right now doing that.
Ron is.
Yeah, and he's talked a little bit about the possibility of doing a cluster on his property.
Yeah.
Um, which, I mean, it's great because it leaves a piece of property that doesn't have, uh, uh, development value. It's got ag value only. And so it automatically reduces that amount of money that it's gonna be worth, even if you sold it to somebody else. Which makes it more affordable for another farmer to pick up.
Yeah.
We just need to make sure.
About cost.
We need to make sure we keep water on them. I think that's one of the biggest concerns.
I think so too.
Water's gotta stay at the property, yeah.
No.
Water's gotta stay with the property. So if we ended up doing TDRs on instead of, uh, clusters, I'd be much more supportive of that.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Perfect. Just get to know.
Yeah, I like the TDR concept.
I do too.
The.
You, you, what leaves you is with workable piece of ground if you have water.
Right, that's right. So, and TR cluster, I mean, I think they're both the same thing. It's just ones on one piece of property, ones on multiple pieces of property.
Right.
Yeah, that accomplies the same thing.
Well, they do accomplish it, but they do it in a different way.
They do.
And, uh, on clusters, you end up having small pieces that sit around the other piece. And on, uh, TDRs, they, they develop it more like traditional type housing.
True.
With, uh, big chunks of land that you sold the rights off of existing.
Yeah.
That's the only difference, I said.
Yeah.
But you're right, pretty close, but.
With clusters, I'm, I'm gonna try and recommend if you guys are, will even bite on it, that our cluster code, we up the amount of open space. And so it's still keep it as a tool in the toolbox, but instead of saying anybody with ten acres can go do a cluster and have all these little pieces of open space. We require a minimum amount of, of acreage that's more than five acres, cause you can't farm five acres. So ten to twenty acres, and then we put a huge incentive on people buying the farm next door, maybe even the farm next door. In order to keep as much of that agricultural space open as they can, if they choose.
I'd like, before I get out of here in another year, I'd love to lobby you two about doing a wet heart cluster subdivision. That concept. I don't like it.
Well, you know lobbyists can be effective, or they could be a piece of crap. Well, I like, we're trying, if we're gonna have cluster, and I don't disagree with you, if you're gonna have a cluster, the remaining parcel has to be something that's workable. And I don't think it's five acres. If it's twenty or thirty acres.
I agree with that.
Then you encourage, what you do is you encourage that regional or community development where they have to reach out to the neighbor and say, look. Uh, let's take ten acres yours and ten acres here. Let's make a thirty or forty acre parcel.
Incentivizes them.
That incentivize.
I just can't get over Gary Hipwell's comment to us before he died. When he says, I'd transfer that, I'd sell that road to you today if they were thirty acres, uh, lots.
Yeah. No, let me ask you another question on this though. Yeah. Hold on, this bodes well, this bodes on this park stuff. It's not abandoned. Could a guy buy that property, the, the development rights are sold off of it, and buy development rights from somewhere else? Once we talked about sending and receiving zone, once they're gone, it's a sending zone, and they have to go to receiving. So you wouldn't have, you probably wouldn't have both.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you don't, he, what he's saying is you don't wanna be able to transfer right from the upper valley to the lower valley.
Oh, well.
That's, that's definitely a part of it, which I think the upper valley would not, they wouldn't wanna see transfers into the valley from out west, and probably vice versa. But what I'm proposing, um, that you'll see soon is three zones, three overlay zones. One is a sending zone, one is a receiving zone.
Right.
And one is a sending and receiving zone, where you could just do, do both things. If you're in a sending zone, you're not receiving. If you're in a receiving zone.
You're not sending.
You're not sending, right. But if you're in a sending-receiving, then you could do both. The other thing that I'm gonna be proposing is that regardless of what those zones are, any piece of property could be a bank. And so you could transfer.
Property could be a.
Could be a, a bank, a, a, a TDR bank. So you could transfer to any piece of property. It's just a question of whether or not you could build it. So let's say you're in the, um, sending area, I'm in a receiving area, but I, but you buy a bunch from me. And you bank it to your property. You might not be able to build it, cause you're in a sending area, but you can hang on to it, let it, uh, uh, mature.
And then my grandkids could sell it off.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, I'm not sure I care about that, you know? Somebody advising wants to hold it for a while.
Yeah.
Who cares?
It, that cuts the county out of having to be the bank, which a lot of communities that do TDRs, they, they do banks. We just let the market do it and let the land be the bank.
And you have a way to track that now. We put it right on their deed, so there's no question. When they come in, you've, you've got X number of TDRs.
Yep, we have a sending covenant, we have a receiving covenant.
And it has nothing to do with being able to build on it. It has to do with you got so many units.
Right.
I want sending areas and receiving areas. I'd really like to have that.
Okay, that's coming.
I don't know if we're in a position to do that today, but if somebody come in and said, look, I got twenty acres here I wanna develop. I'd like to make it a receiving area for TDRs. We could look at that and say, okay, so there'd be density. We will allow that.
Got it. You gotta end, we're talking about this village concept. The village is a receiving.
That's a receiving area.
Yeah, and build a three-story building and put as many of those as you can, cause the more you put in there, the more you're pulling off of the farmland and the old spaces.
This becomes key to this general plan. Because if we're gonna do this, I like to have the sending and receiving areas highlighted when we do this general plan.
Well, and if people want long-term for ag to be out west, this is the way to do it. Then they can go out and buy.
Yeah.
Or sell their TDRs, and that guarantees that ag will be there.
Yeah, if you don't want your neighbors hurt, go buy their TDRs.
That's right.
You don't have to buy their ground.
Buy their TDR.
That's right.
I suspect.
Have that house to look at.
I suspect a lot of the area out west, when we really analyze it, we're probably gonna wanna allow sending and receiving for most of it. It does provide a level of unpredictability, uh, where you don't know whether or not you can have houses here or not. But it's flatland, it's, it's a pretty, um, generic parcel to parcel. Uh, and so I'm not sure that's a, a big issue, as long as they've got all access to services and all that. So one of the easiest thing to do would be to go out to someone who doesn't have access to street services, uh, utilities or whatever. And buy their rights and move it to my land that does have access to.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. I don't disagree.
Yeah, it's out west, you're not gonna have as many village areas as we do up in the Ogden Valley.
Right.
So that will change the dynamics.
Commissioners, are you okay if we have this, um, what it's on your agenda the next couple of weeks, Republican?
Public hearing?
Awesome, thank you.
Lay it on.
Yeah, I won't get it all.
I like it.
Just, we did have, I'll mention, we did have one planning commissioner that was against it, uh, one out of, I think, all seven were there, right?
Yeah, it was a six.
Like that we were forcing, um, building architecture in this way.
I think I know who that is.
Well, this is, uh, and I understand the kick against it. And if it was a major interior modification or something, I could, I could fight against it. But we're talking about a facade and you're creating a, uh, uh. You're preserving what that feels. Villagery, all the same and.
Sense of place, that's.
We are, and value comes with that. So by joining them all together, you actually create a little higher value than you would get just on their own. So I actually agree with that.
You're talking like a planner.
Two years. So I, I would like a few more.
Well, that was funny.
One of the things that we've noticed is we've had a few landowners come in. We've got one person who actually has submitted an application, waiting for this to be adopted. Cause it's not a matter for her of getting the kind of pretty, uh, building that she wants. It's a matter for her of knowing what the regulations are, so she can just get something done. And most of the landowners so far have been.
Well, what's it gonna do? It's gonna give those people with land the ability to say, look, I'm, I'm okay taking this step for the investment, because I know what my neighbors could do.
Yep.
I don't have to worry about them coming in and putting up a.
That's right.
A three-story fiberglass building.
That's right. That's exactly right. So the one thing that we're not asking right now, but we'll ask at some point in the future is this is just creating the zone and creating the text. It's not applying the zone to any properties.
Right.
Our suggestion, probably another meeting in the future after this gets adopted, is going to be to switch any of the CB two properties or CB ones up, properties over to this zone. And then maybe we'll, we'll talk to you even about rezoning some of the, um, other properties on that frontage. So either we wait for the landowner to ask for the rezone, or we just rezone it now, allow their non-conforming use to keep going until they're ready to develop.
We're coming full circle, because the question at the beginning was, are we gonna have a hodgepodge if anybody wants to rezone from CB two to this? If we just rezone a good block to this zone, we'll have to break up.
Yeah.
Knock yourself out, Steve. Sounds to me like you've got, uh, willing votes here.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, I don't mind the idea of just doing it now and then have, do non-conforming.
Okay.
Takes care of those Golden West people, and we're good.
Yeah, great, perfect.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, those are all grandfathered in.
Well, we, they would be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on a, a clause that says if it's pre-existing building, you can expand it and use the same architecture that you already had.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with that. Good job, guys. Thank you.
But if they alter the facade in any way, then you oughta make them conform.
So that's, so I'm happy with that. Yeah, we, uh.
I agree, they can build an addition to it without any, uh, compliance issues, but if they're gonna change the front look in any way, then it would have to conform.
Something we did in one of, uh, our other chapters is if there was any, if seventy-five percent or greater change to the site, to the building or to a facade.
Seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five percent or greater change means a hundred percent of the facade needs to come into compliance. I mean, they're.
You know, we, and on dark sky again, you weren't here, but that was twenty-five percent was the rule on that.
So it's, yeah.
I was thinking, I was thinking if they changed.
Probably okay with that too.
I think fifty.
Okay.
In fact, I'd probably go loop. That's even still, but I like that. Let's get it, I want, that protects that, what'd you call it? Place and time?
Sense of place.
Huh?
Sense of place.
Sense of place.
Sense of place.
That's like a sense of belonging in the sense of place for a sensible being.
It gives it intrinsic value.
See, listen to Stephanie, she comes from a place that's done this for years.
That's right.
That's right.
Old town Southern.
I'll let you read my master's thesis.
It's a long country, Dave.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll see you in half an hour.
Yeah.
Half an hour back here again, Charlie.
This is all day, it's Charlie Day today.
I think he's on next, oh no, we got.
Okay, this is our next discussion commissioners is item five on our agenda, it's discussion repairs and office space considerations. Sean Wilkinson, Rick Ron. Wait, wait, Bill Ross, Scott Mendoza, Scott Park and Chris Allred.
I am, I think I know where this is going.
Substitute.
Oh gee.
Chris Allred?
And a short one at that.
This is a step up.
Watch for, hey, better.
Ready?
Yes.
Scott Mendoza.
Commissioners, how are you? Let me start with the building maintenance part of this. It's a quick discussion. I talked to Scott Park recently, and we've talked about this a few months ago. The Weaver Center needs to replace its IT cooling system.
Oh boy.
So we had an estimate done and we were looking at approximately a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So we need to replace both units. They're just outside that back door where you park. Those are the, the condenser units I'm talking about.
Not just for IT?
Yep, those are, those just cool our IT. The, our systems, our servers.
Man, can't we just buy some of those little Sony?
Nope.
Bills, put on wall in there?
Mitsubishi.
Go ask, go ask Quinn about that, he'll say absolutely not.
Why?
It won't work.
We do have those too, this is, those are in addition, but that's a lot.
So what's happened, they're old, we can't get replacement parts and people have started, when we didn't have the fencing up, people were stepping on those pipes for some reason.
This is the first time you complained about that.
We talked about that.
Talking to Scott Park, he said, we've got the money that we can pull from the parking lot or some of these other capital projects. And we can do that this year, we can fund it out of the twenty twenty-one budget rather than amending the budget and putting it in twenty twenty-two.
Pull, cut a hole in the wall and put a pipe there and blow the outside cool air into there. Don't worry about it till spring.
Until spring, until we get ninety degrees outside.
Yeah, it works good till maybe May, now April.
So if, with your permission, we'd like to move forward and get those replaced in, in twenty, using the twenty twenty-one budget.
These Weaver Center funds, so.
Correct.
Woodbury pays a portion.
Uh, Woodbury would pay it well.
No, not on this.
Yeah, Woodbury probably would pay a portion because.
Who I like.
I'm guessing that.
Everybody who owns the building has service, we can provide stuff for them.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I, I think this is a Woodbury twenty-five percent.
My guess is twenty-five percent would come from Woodbury in this case.
Just keep hanging on to their portion.
So if we, if we do that, we'll run this by, get as much done as we can.
That's right.
We'll run this by Woodbury once we get the official bid and we'll go from there.
I was just going to say, is it bid out? I still like my idea with the whole.
This was the bid, a hundred and forty-one thousand. We just need to make sure that.
Do we have one bidder or two?
Uh, right now, we just have one bid, but we would probably need to put this out because it's.
Yeah. It's one of the competitive bids here.
Correct. Yep.
Time sensitive.
Time sensitive. Quinn will thank you forever to do this.
Big enough though that I suspect we'll have quite a few bidders.
I would, I would think so, I think so.
Yeah. I should hope so.
So if you're okay, we'll get Rice going.
Well, signed it.
All right.
We don't want our IP to do that, no.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the, the meat of our discussion today, we've got Brandon here. So Scott has some updated.
This isn't going to be goat meat, is it?
No.
Updated plans.
Brian Choice.
Of course, Brian, you really wanted to convince all three of us, you brought in one pop.
Yeah.
Come here, you can sit right next to him.
This is for the.
We're giving you.
Oh, it's okay.
We're the public defender space.
Good, how many public defenders you expecting? Two, four, six, eight, ten?
So I'll let, I'll let Scott.
Conference room.
What do we say that we do?
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
It's in.
Right there.
I'll let Scott and Mendoza speak to this.
Scott and Mendoza, almighty, have we been a hire?
Just for time, for consideration of time.
Give him a break. But geez Louise, look at that.
More the merrier.
Or hey.
More the merrier.
For consideration of time, we got about ten minutes to discuss this part, and then we've got to talk about some other issues, because the, the, the other attorney's office needs space, not public defender.
Yeah, this is what I'm a little worried about.
Public defender.
This is public defender.
That first floor.
Okay, in the space we're going to lease from Woodbury.
Yeah, okay, so the space we know we've got under contract.
Yep.
Good.
Exactly right, that's the four thousand square feet that we talked about before.
Yep.
In this space, this is just kind of a conceptual layout, uh, this is something we put together so we could get a cost estimate for you.
It's not excessive what they're asking for, these offices are small.
Well, I say, you're not doing every office, right?
Right, so. So.
Ten by fourteen, they're not big.
What's been designed here, you have eleven offices, five cubicles, one conference room, one break room, uh, a copy area, one lobby and the reception. And this is just my copy, that's what I marked up, everything in yellow that I highlighted, that's kind of what we would consider to be a phase one, so we worked with Brian Baron on this.
Okay.
That's two offices for two attorneys, one area for the reception, obviously the lobby and the entry, break room and the copy area, that would be a phase one.
Okay.
So let me tell you the problem with that, eh? The problem with that is it's going to be a partial finish.
That's true.
Correct.
And it's going to look like it's under construction all the time.
That is true.
Yeah, as long as we can do this, we ought to do, I would view phase one as everything from there up. I'm not those.
Say, say that again, Scott.
I would view phase one as everything from here all the way back. In other words, you're going to have half of it built anyway, so why don't I just put the walls in and finish it?
That's, that's a question.
Mobilization. Here, your mobilization be.
Yeah, to there, right where your fingers are.
What, why not do that? They are actual offices. Well, no, those, those are cubes on the, our side.
Yeah, you finish, then you bring the cubes in that, that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Cubicles in after.
Yes, I'll just leave those up, finish that and then bring the cubes in another time.
From the space that we do lease.
Well, I kind of agree with Scott, I think.
Yeah.
If you're going to start the project.
That's what I feel, gay.
You don't, you don't need to do this with the cubicles, do you, if you had all this?
No, correct.
Is there a reason you need the cubicles?
Once the attorney.
Depends on how many support staff they eventually.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, even if you have some empty offices for a while, the rate they're going will only be.
Put your support staff in an office, they'll be happy.
Yeah.
They'll be mad when you move them into a cubicle, but that's your problem.
So.
Welcome to management, baby.
The next question I have, is there going to be any doors here?
Yeah.
Or windows, I mean?
There are windows along on this whole side right here.
Soul sides and north side.
Okay, well, what about the others?
No, there's no window.
Well, man alive, how'd you like to be in a ten to fourteen foot room all day long with no window?
Or will they have glass in the front of the office?
What, yeah, one thing that we're planning for is a door, like, it goes into my office, there's a door, and then next to the door is a pane of glass.
Window, yeah, okay, and I'm okay with that, so at least you're not feel like, you don't feel like you're rattled in the right time.
Right, the, the idea is to let that light from the north side of the building into the offices at the front.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
And then go across the hallway to the others.
All that I'm okay with.
Yeah.
All right, so are they, what's the height of these?
Right now, they're just the ten foots, are you talking about ceiling wise?
CB, CB height's ten feet, just like these.
At least, yeah, they're at least that, aren't they?
Yeah, if, it would take a lot, we do have room where we could move that ceiling up, but it would take a lot, a lot of money, so.
Same, because your ceiling height in there now is about ten feet.
It's probably fourteen, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, because those windows there on that, those windows on that north side.
The window off, that's why we know they, they go, they, they cut the windows off.
Oh, they did?
They don't go all the way up, yeah, that's why we know the ceiling goes up, because when we looked at it before, you could raise it and get above to the top of the, of the windows, right now that doesn't.
So you're not going to have any natural light going into the center?
Yeah, it has to come through the offices, yeah.
Other than the.
Door would have to be open, yeah, for it to get that.
Well, plus there's the glass next to it.
The last two.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
These are very attractive, I, I suspect those will be just fine. And you know, if you didn't want to, uh, put desks in a couple of those, I suspect you could put another table and chairs in there and have it as a small conference room. Until you were ready to finish it into a cubicle or a desk for somebody.
Supplies.
Yeah. Anyway, well, that's my opinion, I think you ought to finish it.
I'm going with that.
Yeah.
Good. What about that wall that separates the space?
Well, according to Woodbury, he doesn't have a problem with it, just leaving it open.
I think either way would be fine, I think that if a new tenant was coming in, obviously.
Well, we're going to have to, the new tenant comes in, but up until then, I don't.
Just finish this little office thing here and leave all this open.
Yeah.
And.
Just a hallway.
Develop these into, keep these as cubicles for the support staff, is that what I understand?
Leave the space for the cubicle, but do the cubicles when they're needed.
Yeah, leave, leave the space open.
You worry about your security with an open hallway and open door at both ends?
If it's not a public entrance here, that's better, again, keeping them from.
You can block that all the time.
But that, that, that won't be there, they're talking about that wall, so this will just be a hallway that you'll walk right in here, any spot on.
Which one won't be there?
Uh, is that right?
What?
When you said, what about that wall, were you talking about that wall right there?
We're not putting that wall in now.
Yeah, so if you don't put that wall in, the hallway's right there behind it.
No, the hallway's right front.
That's all open space.
That's all open.
Well, yeah, so if it's all open, don't you worry about their safety and, I mean, do you want to be next to a big open area like that? You'd have to go down there and walk to see what it is, it's a hall, you won't, you can't get back there if you're open. Yeah, it's a hall.
No.
No.
It's open space, it's.
It's all, yeah, it's all, you, you can't get back. Either way, but why have it unfinished?
But the public's not, well, the issue would be is we may want to take that over at some point in time, then you got to take that wall out, I don't think it makes a difference, because.
Hold on, when you say we're going to take, could take it over, you're talking about that wall right there.
That's right. Yeah.
So then you would do away with those cubicle spaces?
Right.
Well, if that's the case, why don't you just go ahead and finish it right there then?
Be good.
And be done with it.
Yeah.
I just want it finished in there and nice, I don't want to look like a piece of crap, just do like a little, like the back of Cash Valley Bank, it's all just open. And when you go to those back offices, it's like, well, this is Mickey Mouse.
So what you're saying, put this wall in, then just.
Yeah.
Well, who's going to be coming in this door?
Well, everybody, that's part of the reason is, well, they, they can have access to that, because we have to have access to the restrooms. Okay, that's why they, that door has to be, so we can put the wall, it's not going to be that big a deal to put the wall.
Well, that's what I thought, Bill, I'm with you.
And then we could just leave it there, then when we decide to expand, then we'll do some sort of vegetable, uh, vegetable there that they could go in that be their sign.
Vestibule?
Vestibule.
Vegetable.
Is it a vegetable?
Vegetable.
Kind of, I like that, ve- vegetable, I can at least remember that.
Vestibule, vestibule.
So there's going to be people, you, my understanding was that there's not going to be much public going through here or.
There will, but we do have to have access to the restrooms, so.
Right, all right, well, you can still put the door, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, all right.
You got it, we'll do it, do the damn wall.
All right.
So we.
I agree. Our March orders there, now the next.
So hold on, I got one more question.
Go ahead.
On that, uh, a copy room.
I love it.
No, copiers right here, this is the break room, isn't it?
I saw it was a copy room.
Now it says break room, and then there's your copier right there.
That's right.
It's not up there.
Hey, no question.
Yeah.
Let it go.
Isn't that what you.
Public copier.
Yeah, I didn't read that, right?
I read it back.
I liked your idea about that still, having the hallway there.
Okay.
Because it, let it go.
All right.
Well, you don't like the break room there?
No, I like the break room.
I do too.
Okay. So Commissioner Jenkins mentioned the, the space behind Cash Valley Bank on the second floor.
Yeah.
So the county attorney's office needs space for prosecutors. Uh, Chris Allred has approached me now three or four times, we've talked a little bit about this, but we're to the point where we have to make a decision as to where those prosecutors are going, because right now, they're out of space and they're adding several more next year, so it's critical now, we, we have to have a space for these prosecutors.
Well, this has moved along quickly.
Lot faster.
Escalated quickly, right? Send that phrase.
Uh, so do you have, will you have a, will the prosecution have a reception area like that, or what's going to happen on that?
Well, it depends on what I guess the intermediate to long-term plan is for where that is, I know we talked about the chamber as being an option, we're waiting them out.
How's your buddy Chuck coming to move? I haven't seen a lot of boxes back.
Okay, can I, can we go down there and walk through the back of Cash Valley?
Yeah.
Let's walk down there, right now.
It's a big space.
So, and talking to Chris.
I've been there several times.
He even said, look, if we just had those cubicles back there for right now, that's fine, we don't need reception, we don't need that, we just need spaces for people to have a workstation.
I've been down there before too, but I'd like to look at it with fresh eyes.
We can go down.
I'd like to go in by where the, uh, Danny Musgraves.
Yeah.
That's how you do it.
We do that.
One of us will go through. So did we figure Danny Musgraves gone now?
I don't know.
He's not, I was just talking, well, I haven't seen him.
We don't know.
But Shelley thinks he's no longer there, but it's locked, so you give me permission, I'll, I'll call and contact him and tell him I'm drilling the lockout and calling anything away if the first.
Well, that's what your agreement was, is last year Christmas.
That was, that, that's a year old.
So Mr. Chair, fifteen minutes, can we walk down there?
Yeah, let's go.
Let's go.
We got to.
I'm sorry to be a little bit of a weiner on this, but I like to walk, look at things. I like to put my feet on the ground. That's just the way I, boots on the ground.
Get a feel for it.
That's right. I like to touch it and feel it and rub it.
Well, there's one that's just weird. It's just this short. Like I put it in a big. How funny. Yeah, Chris told me he used to. Those are just for decoration. Did you get lunch, Charlie?
No.
Do you want lunch?
Yes.
You don't want any of this stuff?
No, I'm okay.
Sure?
I'm health food diverse.
Also Brian Callens. Brian, we're gonna be a few minutes here. Feel, we're just sorry to put you off just a minute. Likely fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay, Commissioner, I'll be on standby.
Thank you, friend.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy, it's right. I tried to get him out of there back here. He just didn't leave. I said, hurry, let's keep going. We're gonna be late.
That was about fifteen minutes ago.
Portland, we're just down at your office. I can be there just there.
Were you? Yeah.
Hey.
Would've been easier, huh?
We figured we gotta move that one wall in about three feet.
You're gonna still have a desk in there.
Uh, yeah. Won't be able to get around it.
Yeah.
Backside.
But it's gonna be fine because the ceiling's gonna be six, what was it, six and a half feet tall?
An extra story.
Okay, Commissioners, we're gonna move on to our two thirty discussion regarding the re-adoption of street connectivity. Charlie Ewer, Rick Grover, Chris Crockett, Portland Erickson here.
Let's see if we can get you back on, uh, schedule.
Yeah.
So July sixth, you guys adopted this ordinance, um, and we didn't realize that was the one meeting between Fatima and Craig, where Craig actually took the recording afterwards and transcribed, as he was transcribing the recording, he realized there was never a final vote on this. So, um, this was, we all thought it was passed. It's been sitting in the codified version of the code. Uh, and it isn't until recently that we realized that the, the final vote was actually never taken. So a motion was taken, then we went into discussion, uh, motion and a second, then we went into discussion, and then just didn't.
That's my fault.
That was, yeah.
My fault. I'll take responsibility.
We had discussion and we just never took the vote.
Right. Just final vote.
Oh, we did have seventeen hours worth of discussion on masks, so didn't we?
I tried to watch her back.
You missed it. Come on.
So this is item number five on your, uh, agenda tomorrow. I just wanted to make sure you knew what it was.
Game, give me a water while you go.
Before we even talked about it. I don't even know that I need to give a presentation tomorrow.
Well, you just, we'll just hold it or. Okay.
Yeah, I'll be down there if you want me to speak to any of it, but. Yeah, just, just need a motion and a vote.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's all I got.
That's good. Thanks. You're back on schedule.
Great. Brian Callen, guess what? You're up.
Brian here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here. I didn't. Yeah, those guys didn't give me enough time to prepare. I thought I had.
On this side of the parking lot, Brian, you'll find us. We're pretty efficient. Appreciate your help over the weekend too, by the way. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, Commissioners, let me jump right into my, uh, report today. I don't want you to feel like we're not efficient on the other side of the parking lot, so.
Attaboy. Attaboy.
Uh, forty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two total cases today.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Excuse me. Are you calling me from a tanning booth or a tanning bed or?
No, I am remote. I'm traveling today, so I'm.
I'm just teasing you. You're looking. You're in some kind of a, a tanning bed almost.
Uh, oh, it's just the light behind me, I guess.
It's okay.
Uh, I, I, it could be my halo reflection. Maybe you're seeing there.
Attaboy. Okay.
Um, let's see. Let's talk about active cases. That's a good place to go, I guess. Uh, we currently have three thousand four hundred nineteen active cases. That's, uh, positive cases over the last fourteen days. That's an increase of two hundred and thirty-five from last week. Um, so over the last two weeks, we are seeing a slight growth pattern uh, in new positive cases. We're watching that pretty closely, but it, uh, it's not an exponential growth, um, so we're not, uh, not too alarmed about it yet.
They break through clay cases? Most of those break through or?
No, no, uh, still less than ninety percent of our cases are breakthrough cases. Um, uh, so hundred and fifty-four is our daily average, seven-day average. That's an increase of seventeen additional cases from last, last week.
Hold on, Brian, you just said something. You said less than ninety percent of the cases are breakthrough?
Yes.
Well, that means less than ninety percent, so uh, ten percent would not be breakthroughs.
No, ten, ten percent are breakthrough, about ten percent are breakthrough cases. The other ninety percent are.
I just didn't understand. Sorry.
Yeah, the ninety percent are unvaccinated people in our, in our community.
Okay, got it.
Great, um. So, uh, I, I just kind of sum it up. We are watching this growth pattern pretty, pretty closely, but we aren't seeing an exponential growth, so uh, we'll just continue to monitor it and see how, how these case numbers go, uh, before we make any decisions on taking any act, additional actions. Um, our death number for, uh, from the beginning of the pandemic is up to three hundred and fourteen now for, uh, Weber County residents that we're averaging about six deaths a week, uh, going all the way back to the first part of September. As we look at our hospitalizations, um, currently thirty, there's seventy-four people hospitalized, uh, in our two hospitals with COVID-related illness. Um, as we look at our ICU occupancy, thirty-five beds out of thirty for a hun- one hundred and seventeen percent occupancy, uh, two hundred and eighty-four out of four hundred and fifty-five for other hospital beds. That's a sixty-two percent oc- occupancy. And, uh, twenty of our seventy-four total COVID cases are in the ICU right now, or, or another way to look at that is twenty of the thirty-five ICU beds are being occupied by COVID patients. Um. Uh, let's see, let's move to the school situations. Actually, this week we looked pretty good in the schools, um. The total for the school year, uh, that is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-four cases, uh, fourteen hundred and three of those are in students. One hundred and thirty-five of those are in teachers and the rest are in, uh, one hundred and eighty-six are in other uh, people associated with the schools. As we look at the active number of cases in schools, two hundred and eighty-one of those are in students. Um, two hundred and twenty-one are in teachers and twenty-seven are in other, uh, other people associated with the schools. Both of those are just, uh, little bit of a decrease or similar to numbers that we had last week. So we're staying kind of consistent in our school situation. Actually, a little bit of an improvement this week in our schools. We still have seventy-three of our schools impacted with at least one active case, but we only have one school this week that's approaching midway to their threshold for the test to stay event, that we have one elementary school that has, um, uh, thirteen cases today. Their thresh, midway threshold would be fifteen. Test to stay would activate at thirty cases, so, um, as we've been monitoring that mid-threshold and doing some additional outreach, working with the schools and the, and the parents and the student body in those schools, we feel like those efforts have been uh, beneficial and we're, we're managing those cases in the schools pretty well. Um, so I, we hope to continue along that trajectory. Um, we currently have two thousand two hundred and fifty-six uh, people associated with the schools that we've asked to quarantine, uh, and those are the people that have been exposed to a positive case and uh, asked them to stay homes, uh, and monitored for symptoms to help us control the spread of the disease. Good news on the vaccination uh, efforts. We are still seeing some growth in the thirty to thirty-nine-year-olds and the nineteen to twenty-nine-year-olds. Both of them are averaging about one point two percent growth, uh, in uptake of the vaccinations, uh, in getting their uh, percentage pop, of their population occupa- uh, vaccinated up to six, sixty-one percent. Uh, we're, we're seeing a one percent growth in the twelve to eighteen-year-olds. And we have just started administering, uh, the vaccinations to the five to eleven-year-olds. I think this is kind of the last major whole hurdle where we're hoping to reach, um, getting that emergency use, uh, use authorization for the vaccination for the five to eleven-year-olds. We got that approval last week. We, uh, we administered a few vaccinations, not, not really large numbers, but we started letting people come for available appointments. But this week, starting today, we've got clinics scheduled in our schools, uh, every, every day of the week. Um, today, November eighth, we are at Highland Junior High, Mount Ford, Mount, Mound Fort Junior High and Mount Ogden Junior High, uh, from three thirty to six thirty, um, and it's my understanding that uh, we are, we filled appointments, we're taking walk-ins. We're also, uh, approaching this as, uh, as a an effort to vaccinate the entire family if they're not vaccinated. So we have the, um, vaccinee- vaccinations available for the adults. We've got the vaccinations available for the kids, the five to eleven-year-olds, and we've got the vaccinations available for the people looking for the booster shots at these clinics as well. Uh, on the ninth and the eleventh, from three to seven PM, we'll be vaccinating in Weber School District, uh, and we have events scheduled at Plain City Elementary, Far West Elementary, Bates Elementary, Green Acres Elementary, Freedom Elementary, North Park, Washington Terrace, and Birch Creek Elementarys, um. So I, I just wanted to give you that information, make you aware of the efforts that we are doing in the schools to help get this vac, these vaccinations out to the kids. We also are hosting, uh, clinics at the Health Department, and then all of our other vaccinating partners in the community are able to administer these vaccines as well. Um, it, it will be about six weeks before we start noticing uh, the benefits of vaccinating the five to eleven-year-olds. Uh, we need to, we need to get them their first vaccination, wait to the timeframe in between the first and second dose, and then get them their second dose in about two weeks. Uh, after that, when they'll have full immunity. So, uh, you know, as we look at our planning for this, uh, we plan on, uh, providing these opportunities for vaccinations uh, through the end of the year, so that the students can get their first and second dose. And we'll watch the case numbers closely with the test to stay protocols, but I think, um, optimistically, as, uh, the school breaks for their winter break and then come, come back in January, we're hoping to have a new COVID experience in the schools and one that is even easier to manage than, uh, than what we've had as at the beginning of this school year. Uh, we, we see two things that will happen, vaccinated students in the schools plus a, a, a break, you know, a week-long break where if there are positive cases in the schools, they'll be at home. Um, and we'll get to reset some of the case numbers we're seeing at the schools that way. So I, I think some optimistic things to look for in the, in the future and in our school efforts. Um, and Commissioners, that's my report today unless you've got any questions.
Commissioner Forre. Yeah, thanks, Chair Harvey. A couple of questions. Uh, first, I guess a question comment. It appears based upon those numbers you've talked about with beds, ICU beds and other bed, that's staying fairly stable. I remember the last three or four weeks. In fact, that's a little decrease, as I recall, from last week on the ICU bed.
Yeah, it, it is a little bit, Commissioner. Um, we've, since, uh, since we've been doing these reports in Sep, the beginning of September, we've hovered between a hundred and, uh, three percent occupancy and a hundred and thirty-six percent occupancy, and it just kind of goes up and down a little bit from week to week. So we've dropped down just a little bit to a hundred and seventeen percent this time. And that's good, but still, still put the pressure on the hospitals that, uh, with those.
Yeah, I understand there's still pressure, but what I was concerned about, that we, we haven't seen a major uptick in those ICU beds or other beds over the last two or three weeks. It stayed like a hundred and thirty-six percent's been our top.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that, that is a, a good, good summary of where we're, our statistics have been. And statewide, our ICU occupancy is just under ninety percent right now.
Okay, so we have a little room. And then as far as the, uh, infected or the positive, how many cases have we seen of that with the children under eleven or, or basically adults under eighteen? Or excuse me, kids under eighteen?
Um, it's, it's a pretty consistent percentage, and I apologize, I don't have the exact percentage with me, but we are actually seeing higher rates of infection in the, the twenty, the nineteen to thirty-nine age demographic than we are in the students in the schools. Um, there, there's a different focus on the students in the schools where we have, you know, our, our contact tracing school teams. Uh, thirteen employees at the Health Department focused just on identifying those positive cases uh, and doing the outreach with the schools, uh, to the parents of those students and, and asking them to follow the guidance for, uh, for quarantine and isolation with the positive cases. So you know, schools, we're, we've, we've got an extra couple of tools that we're using to help manage those cases and keep them down, and I think we're seeing the benefit of those efforts in the reduced cases in the younger age demographics. Yeah.
Yeah, right. I would, I would agree. I guess my point is, is that, you know, two months ago, everybody was very concerned that we would see a huge infection rate in those five to eleven, and that hasn't transpired. A lot of that comes from the schools, the parents, and what you've done. So that's a good sign.
Thank, thanks, Commissioner, and I, I agree. We approached the school year uh, with, using some models that the State Department of Health had, had created, um, uh, in an effort to try and anticipate what the spread could look like. Um, I think, uh, now that we've experienced the first couple of months of schools, we've rec- recognized that those models were uh, you know, very, very conservative in some of the inputs, which, uh, you know, and by conservative, I mean, they went with worst-case scenario. Where we've been fortunate that we haven't, uh, we haven't, uh, had the case numbers pan out the way they predicted in those models.
Good. Okay, well, good news.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins.
Nope, nothing for me.
Nothing for me either, Brian Callen. Again, thank you very much for what you're doing and.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Ah, sure, Sean Wilkinson, just a second, Brian. We got Sean Wilkinson in the room. Go ahead.
Hey, Brian, just a quick question. With the, the booster shots, I know they're for sixty-five and older and those with compromised immune systems. I know other people have gotten those, and you mentioned that if somebody shows up at one of the schools, they're giving those boosters out. Is that just kind of a general rule now? Can anybody basically get those?
Yeah, Sean, the guidance changed a couple of weeks ago, and now really that booster shot is available to anyone that wants to receive it in the community. So if you've had your full, uh, full vaccination doses, so two doses if you were Pfizer or Moderna, or the one vo, one if you did a Johnson and Johnson vaccination, you can go back now and get that, uh, that boost dose six months later after your second dose is what the recommendation is for Pfizer.
Where do you go get it at, Brian?
Um, at the Health Department. We've got appointments available, our website, uh, there, there's an appointment scheduling aspect there, or you could go to any of the pharmacies or, or health clinic partners that are administering vaccinations. And you can even mix, uh, brands if you'd like to. If you received Pfizer the first time and want to go with Moderna for your third dose, you can do that or vice versa. Uh, but you wouldn't want to mix, um, the, it's not the same guidance for mixing Johnson and Johnson with those other two.
So I understand if you mix those, the effectiveness of them goes up a fair amount.
Uh, well, I thi- I think we're seeing in the research, uh, from the two companies, Moderna and Pfizer, that, uh, the, the boost dose increases effectiveness for both of those. But it's kind of too early, it, and there, there hasn't been a study that's really looked at uh, or, or identified a, a compounding intra, uh, benefit by mixing the doses. Um, most of the research that come, has come out related to that is focusing on, uh, on demonstrating that there's no, uh, detrimental effect to, to mixing those, those doses. But I think if you mix them, you can anticipate the same level of efficacy as if you stayed with the same brand.
All right, Brian, so did you say that if you had J and J, you have to stay with J and J because I heard that you could mix it?
Well, it, if you, uh, the guidance that we've been receiving is if you, uh, decide to mix brands, there's a recommendation that you do the full range of vaccination with the, with the new brand. So if you had Johnson first and you decided to go with, uh, Pfizer for your next dose, they, they, the guidance suggests following up, um, a month later with the second Pfizer dose.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Great, thank you. Great, that's great. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Appreciate you. Alright, thanks. See ya.
All right, Commissioners, that's a great report from Brian Callen. Our next deployment's at three thirty. We're just ahead of that.
Wow.
Uh, it's a discussion on the, uh, zoning regarding the proposed zoning text. Commend and rezone of the property, M three zone.
Yeah, I know, I know Brian gets his information from CDC, and they haven't come out with it. But other areas have talked very openly about the fact that by mixing these on your, uh, your booster, that it doesn't go up just two or three times like it does on the other. It goes up fifteen or twenty times.
That's what I've heard, yeah.
So there's some real advantages to that.
Yeah.
Secondly, you know, when it comes to these children shots?
Five to eleven?
Right. If you've got grandkids, which we have, who have uh, underlying circumstances, like I got a couple that's got some asthma issues.
Yeah.
They're pretty good to get that. But the others, I, I'm telling my grandkids, don't get, don't get, uh, vaccinated. And if you happen to get it, uh, the natural immunities at that age are better than the ones you get with the shot. So just let them go through it. Most of them are just a little droopy for a couple of days and they're off and going. So I'm very cautious about that. I'm not, the one thing I'm not, on everything else, I've been right with them all the way. When it comes to boosters or these shots for kids five to eleven, I'm, I'm not going there yet. Yeah, I just, I'm not quite there.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. Now, that's my personal thing. That's all I wanted to know.
No, I got it. It's all right.
So Charlie Ewer, the planner's online. I thought he was gonna be here in person.
Well, I think his, uh, he's, uh, just, his computer might be on. They can hear you.
I think, yeah, each ways.
What do we got? Charlie?
We're waiting for Charlie and Rick and Sean and Liam, Stephanie Russell, Scott. Stephanie's here. Then we got, you got us four o'clock, and then we got four thirty with the, Gage, four thirty with the.
Okay, I'll have to step in and out quick, so I got.
Well, I'm gonna turn the time over to you. I'm gonna let you sell it.
Okay. Did you see those numbers?
I did.
By the way.
I handed them back over to Stefan.
Yeah, that's good. I'm glad we got those. That way we'll be prepared for when they get you.
Yeah.
We can say, look, we know it's unusual, but you have done it before.
Yeah.
Oh.
Look at that picture.
Hey, look at this, Gage. You know what those are?
Ear tech.
Those are ear tags.
Ear tags for your.
First two, my first two Angus cows, a box.
Really? Good for you. How come they're on your roof?
They're not on my roof.
What are they on?
They're just on Levi's.
Oh, they're on Levi's? Okay. Alright, I get it. Oh, they're sitting on your leg?
Yeah.
First two, Rip. First two, River Ranch, one and two.
River View Ranch, number one, number two.
You got them on the ranch?
Yep.
What are they?
Angus.
Angus?
They got a little uh, Kianina, yeah, they're bread heifers.
Bread heavy, wow. Ooh, we didn't like that. You got hay?
Yeah.
You got plenty of hay.
Got plenty of hay. Well, I let them go all summer long. I think I should have pl- plenty of hay for the four months in the winter.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, I figured, I figure uh, if I share all mine, all mine for all summer, they can share. A little bit, a little bit of theirs for four months.
I don't disagree with that. Well, they had that animal fire auction this morning. Looked like the prices, we'll see what uh.
Western Bison does in a few weeks.
Well, they had the analog sale, analog island sale this morning.
How was that? How'd they do?
Well, it looked like they had plenty of bids. I'll see, I'm gonna talk to Jeremy.
They're gonna change that meeting again, Gage?
What's that?
That was just Anne Marie and Kate. They can't do the nine, even though they said they could, but figured out.
Were they coming to this meeting?
Yeah, they, they aren't gonna log in, they're gonna log into this.
Oh, they were coming live, I get it.
Yeah, well, they originally were gonna come into town, but um, we said, no, don't come into town yet.
Yeah, it's a little premature.
It's a little premature, so I. But they wanted to log in, but they thought we were talking about the development agreement, so they freaked out on me. Um and I was like, they're not talking about the development agreement in a public meeting. We're just talking about the text amendments.
They can chill, Bill.
They're really wound up.
They probably got a lot of pressure on them.
They have really wound up. Okay, so we're gonna reschedule this meeting for tomorrow.
Oh, that was your four o'clock?
Was that? No?
No, 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 our nine o'clock for tomorrow, we're rescheduled. No, we don't want to reschedule the four thirty.
Oh, the four thirty's on.
Four thirty is on, game on, ready, right?
So I need to tell you that. So there's, there's different types of shocks. So when you do this, there's different types of shocks. There's the bent finger shock, there's the shock is straight out. There's a shock like this. They mean different things.
Okay.
Two and a half of them.
Oh, or.
You think I'd know that, but I think I've been in the South before.
Well, I, Hawaii, you learned that when you.
Yeah, I've actually, I've been to Hawaii once and it was for a layover on the way to Australia, so I've been to Hawaii for three hours. I know, it was horrible.
I've been to Georgia once.
For a layover.
Yeah.
Atlanta?
It's like three hours.
I wasn't claiming, I wasn't claiming any kind of uh validation on that. I was just letting you know, I've only been to Hawaii once. It was for three hours.
You were Australian? That's pretty good. I've been to Australia. That's a long flight.
Well, I don't know if I want to go to Australia now. Man, they're over there with uh, uh all kinds of riots and they're taking.
That's what happens when you take away people's rights.
Yeah.
In Australia, I didn't.
Oh, yeah, they're making them all get the shots and they won't, they won't let them go out of the house and they're doing, very draconian.
Very draconian.
Well, they used to be, but they, well, ever since they took their guns away. They took their guns away here back in the seventies or eighties and ever since then, boy, now, now they push them all the time.
Yeah. Starts with the guns, doesn't it?
It always does.
It seems to.
Happened in the Soviet Union.
You can always trace it back to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it starts with the guns. Boy, can't we get some air in this room?
Yeah.
A lot of hot air.
Well, that's the point. It's hot and steamy and.
We got too much hot air in there, it's up though.
Reason on the one side, all over here. Did you tell Shelley about the innovation?
Uh, we're up here.
Was it about today's meeting or tomorrow's?
Today's, did we get that? You or her? Version that we can edit?
Oh, uh, so I called Kate, she's sending it to you. She did not want to send it to me.
She's gonna send it to me?
She's gonna send it directly to you. She said she did not want to send it to me.
What email?
He's on it.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm guessing.
Mister William Ross.
I can, I can send her an email.
Charlie, I'm sitting here looking at you, you're online.
Better figure out who that is.
So it's not you?
That probably is me, I just, I didn't log out.
Let me know if you didn't get it.
Well, there you go. Oh, we can listen to you talk. Liam, how you doing?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good, we were kind of just uh stalking you.
Hopefully you found me a good new office, right?
We're talking about it.
Mother's lounge.
We're just gonna change the. Okay, we got a discussion regarding the proposed zone text amendment and rezone of a property in the M three zone. Scotty Perks.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we've got two county initiative requests. One was to alter the land use code. In the manufacturing zones to facilitate.
That's good.
Larger scale manufacturing uses and developments. The second of which is an actual rezone of a property in the M three zone to an M two classification.
All down great, great.
So the text amendment that you'll see in the staff report is going to the planning commission tomorrow for their review and recommendation. Will be on the commission agenda next Tuesday, the sixteenth. But in a nutshell, this text amendment is adding stratification between the M one, two and three. To add a little bit more distinction between those three zones. And also to provide some clarifications to protect food manufacturing uses. Um there's a few things we wanted to separate a little bit more between the M one, two and three. And a few things in there also to facilitate large scale developments that don't necessarily have connection to a turnkey water will serve letter or sewer. Uh will serve letter, so larger scale in that they're creating those utility districts.
So the point is, are we adding to this? Large constant animal feed operation?
Uh, so that's a different subject that we're throwing in on this one. So this, this last legislative session, uh we've got an ordinance or. A new code that says if you haven't already adopted the uh, uh CAFO um ordinance, you need to do it by February second. Figure we, we've got so much going on, we might as well just get the little stuff out of the way with whatever, you know, means we can. So. This is not particularly related to the M two zone or N three zone.
This is, this is actually, you came out and said, we gotta allow, have a spot for large animal production, right?
Yeah, or if we don't, we need to specify why we don't.
Wow.
And, and our suggestion was just to say, just to go with what the state statute says about why we don't, because we've got an urban density. For most of the area where prevailing, prevailing winds won't allow a concentrated feed operation in a way that would cause a nuisance.
Well, I'm kind of the opinion, we don't want that.
What, Gage? I, yeah, I don't see that we, we don't really have an area that fits into that right now.
Well, the largest we got, Randy's got one out there, he's got about eight hundred head on.
Yeah.
And his isn't a concentrated feed operation.
But that's not concentrated feed.
So what's the uh?
He's, he's ranging this.
Yeah.
So uh, full feed.
No, that's not true.
Oh, really?
At times, he feeds.
So our ordinance allows supplemental feeding as it stands right now out in that zone.
Okay.
So especially.
So why even putting this in then?
Just to make it very clear that we followed the state statute.
Though we addressed it.
Yeah, and if somebody were to come in with a real large concentrated feed operation, I mean, we're talking about eight hundred head and more. Um in those particular cases, uh we, we don't have a zone that.
Right.
Not for it. Um honestly, I think this ordinance or the, the state code, I think it was crap at the way it was so that some of the more rural and open air. Um uh counties can um actually have areas for these to happen. I just think we're, we're so close to one set run. It's. It's gonna be hard for us to find anywhere.
I, I don't disagree with that. You know, Cache County has a couple of big feed operations up there, Scott. Locks Elder, I think, has one or two, primarily pork.
Yeah.
Okay, so right here says a large concentrated animal feed operation is defined in this section. Is a use not permitted in any zone and uncorporated account.
Okay, I don't complain about that. Okay, I'm all for that.
But one of the reasons why we got it here is because as we were looking at the M two and M three zones out west and protecting food manufacturing. This is one of the uses, we wanted to make sure we shield it again. So we figured, let's just two birds, one stone, let's just get this done.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up now. That's.
Good.
Fits in well to protect that M, M one through M three.
Yeah.
It's gonna have somebody come in and ask for it there.
So are we uh, are we on for this next, for tomorrow?
Uh, not tomorrow, uh, we, this is on for the planning commission tomorrow.
Okay.
That's right. So um, text amendment to the M zones, that's that first item we want to talk about. The other item was the actual rezone of a property out. West from M three to M two, so they can take advantage of some of the changes in this text amendment. So that particular property is out eighty-three hundred west, south of the P S or wherever, where that's at, right? Is there any questions about changing its classification from M three down to M two?
So is this the property we're talking about?
Yeah, I don't have any problems.
What does M two allow them to do that M three doesn't?
So M three is heavy intensive uses.
Uh opportunities.
Yeah, well, really heavy manufacturing like missile part and missile fuels and, yeah, explosives, hazardous materials.
Well, in my mind, this is just a better environment.
So it's actually a downgrade.
Yeah.
A down zone.
Technically, if you look at it, if you're looking at it from uh, heaviest intensity uses. But I think these guys would say it's better for them because.
Well, it's definitely better for them than what it does. It gives them some type of protection around there. They're gonna come in and make a major investment.
That's right.
They're not gonna have uh missile ma- missile or some type of high manufacturing across the street that's in a.
That's right.
Maybe create issues.
The other thing in the text that we uh, have written in is any kind of off gassing or particulate matter or. Uh airborne pollutants that is coming from a site has to be contained or, or, or kept onsite with some kind of filtration system. That way it's not wafting over into the neighbors and getting into the food processing.
I wish Algonsoni would have thought about that about thirty years ago.
We, we had good conversation about dog food when we were working.
You know, I'm amazed. Some people think that dog food is so obnoxious, but I actually love that smell.
We're coming to do my office.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Well, I go down there and eat breakfast at Javier's and we smell that. I'm, I've been over there, I, you know, they're good customers. I walk through that plant all the time.
Wow.
And it's just baked grains. It isn't until the very last process that there's any uh, uh.
Byproduct.
Byproducts put on it. Up to that point, what you smell in the air is just wheat and grain baking. Just like you open your oven door and smell that bread in there.
No, it's pretty yeasty.
You know, you can say what you want.
Yeah. That actually brings up a, a good point.
You must have been born in Plain City.
I was. For us, that's a good smell.
We crafted the ordinance essentially to say, the odor or airborne particulate affects food processing. So it's not, you can't have airborne. Um matter leaving your site, it's if it negatively affects food processing. So if uh, if they're okay with the way dog food smells and the dog food. When they move next door, then it's great.
Maybe I gotta get them to move out west there. On Rob Harris' place.
Yeah, put them on Rob.
Some uh good redevelopment opportunity and. Yeah.
Do you have any other questions about the text amendment or the rezone that's proposed?
I have none. I'm supportive.
I'm good. So hey, I appreciate you guys working on this. Uh, I know that they put you under a little pressure to get this done and.
Yeah, it was good. It was fun. We've got some applicants that have uh, we kind of pushed pause on there so we can get these done, but. Now we're trying to get full board back to these other applicants.
Well, and we're headed the right direction on this with this rezone as we go to form base. I mean, what we want out there is something that is in a sale or in a. That we could be proud of in Weber County.
That's right.
And so I think this starts that path forward on that.
As we discussed earlier today, one of the things in the development agreement, which um, we would hope would get adopted with the rezone. Um is uh, uh infrastructure, uh road building and stuff like that. They would, they would like to not be required to do that. Um and as we discussed this morning, if we just keep that out of the development agreement, um focus on that with the incentives package in the future. Uh, you know, we can get a commitment to them one way or the other, but it's probably not the best time to do it.
It's probably a good compromise. I think so.
I do. Do you want me to bring up my concern here? Do you want to go back down? I do have one concern, one concern with this. On page thirty-seven of the document. The, the addition, the language that's added here.
Which document? Thirty-seven, right there.
Part C, you have a little part C there that's been added in.
Nah, in green?
Yes. The applicability of the provisions of this chapter may be waived or modified by the county commission by means of an executed and recorded development agreement. Specific Weaver modifications will be explicitly stated in the development agreement. I'm gonna go talk to these guys after the meeting. This, this one item might receive a slight change. Because under Utah code and Fledma, when we're talking about amending or changing. A, a zoning land use regulation amendment. It's very specific that it has to be done by the legislative body. Um after they submit an amendment to the planning commission under the procedure specified in the statute. Requiring a public hearing and notice and such. So to me, the part C just seems to kind of circumvent the requirement.
So you're saying it's gotta go the other way, where we present, we uh file with the planning commission, they have to approve it and then come back to us for approval.
It seems like if we do it this way and somebody were to challenge us on that, it would be easy for them to say, you circumvented regulations and.
It's a little more traditional, where they started.
And so ultimately, yeah, you still have the authority to change it, but not do a development.
Yeah, I see. It just makes it operate, just a hair difference.
I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. Just go through the process, planning commission, us.
It's a regular process.
They submit the change, request the change, planning commission, planning commission, yes or no, comes down.
Okay.
So the way it is in here, we start it and go through it first and give it to the planning.
Well, it basically gives us the right to yes or no before, before planning commission.
Yeah, or without.
You can initiate it, but it's.
Regular process.
So we don't typically bring development agreements to the planning commission. We bring development principles and opportunities. And then their conditions of approval or their request for approval would then be captured by a development agreement that you guys.
I don't, I don't.
Okay, so I think what we'd, we could do is we could tweak this, tweak this language to say any modification would personally be from the planning commission at public hearings.
Yes, perfect.
And that's a public hearing.
Yep, public hearing.
Okay, that works. Good catch.
And that public hearing is gonna happen tonight.
So.
Or sorry, tomorrow night.
Liam, a question I have is, um, so with Snow Basin, we put language in there that. Would allow them to circumvent going back to the county commission. For changes to the site plan layout in a development agreement that it could be approved administratively or the planning commission. Is that gonna be a plan? Yeah, geez, yeah, potentially. So I think that may be something that we'll want to chat with Cortland about.
Yeah.
He was in here.
Make sure that we're on firm footing.
Yeah.
Cause that sounds similar.
Similar, yeah.
Right.
Good catch.
Then I'll have to get with Cortland and you as well, then let him know and do the things.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, that's, we probably ought to verify that.
Okay, I thought we had. Any other discussion points you guys want to have?
Good.
Okay, I like it.
Well, if there's nothing else, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
We'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're adjourned.